I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order. And in doing so, welcome everybody who's in attendance this evening. And also welcome our viewers on television. And let us start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to address the committee who isn't already on the agenda? Seeing no hands, we can move on to our next agenda item. Which is our student representatives from north and south. And we can start with Ed, please.
Thank you. Congratulations to our seniors who were honored at academic convocation held on Thursday, June 4th. One hundred and two seniors were invited and received excellence awards, performing arts awards, and service awards. The salatorian award of class of 2017 was Leanne Galliant. And the valedictorian award for the class of 2017 was Anna Kiley. Congratulations to both of these students for attaining the highest GPA. Plymouth North School graduated 287 students on Saturday, June 3rd. Over 3,000 family members and guests were in attendance to support the graduates. Of the graduating class, 75% will be attending either a two or four-year college, 4% to the military, 4% to a technical certification or preparatory program, and 17% into the workforce. We'd like to wish all of our graduates success in their future endeavors. Fall 2017 sports signups will be Thursday, June 8th. Students interested in signing up for a fall sport should attend this meeting. Meet the coaches in clearance tonight is Tuesday, June 13th. Freshmen will meet at 6:00 PM and all other grades will meet at 7:00 PM in the Plymouth North Auditorium. All students interested in participating in a fall 2017 sport at Plymouth North should attend this meeting with a parent or guardian. Friday, June 9th at 7:00 PM, Northern Lights will hold a concert to help raise money for Relay for Life Plymouth. Come see this group's last performance in the Plymouth North Performing Arts Center and help support the American Cancer Society. Fall dance team trials will take place on the 7th through June 9th from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the Plymouth North Gymnasium. The Plymouth North Junior Prom was held Friday, May 19th at the Seacrest in Falmouth. Congratulations to the following students for being voted by their peers into prom court. For girls, Angela Nadeau, Lexie Seinwick, Caitlin Haley, Jaden Tavakelli, Cassie Litve, Ty Cole, Jack McPherson, Zane Karim, Jake Manfredi, and Ryan MacLeod. Zane and Cassie were voted for prom king and queen. Final exams will begin Tuesday, June 13th. Tuesday, June 13th and Wednesday, June 14th will be full days of school. Thursday, June 15th and Friday, June 16th are early dismissal days at 11:05. The last day of school is Monday, June 19th. The late bus, last day of the year, will be Thursday, June 8th. Transportation applications must be turned in for all students regardless of travel mode. The final day to get the discounted rate is Monday, June 19th. Congratulations to the following girls and boys, track and field athletes who are named Patriot League All-Stars. Jaden Tavakilian, 100-meter dash, Caitlin Haley, 400-meter dash, Kate Fisher, 800-meter dash, Sam Curtin, mile run, Liz Marshall, 800-meter dash, and the Mile, Ben Andrade, Ray De Silva, Josh Pastana, Jimmy Riley, Bryden Ryder, Zach Greeley, and Nick McNamara. Ben Andrade was named Patriot League MVP. Congratulations. The last day for food services will be offering breakfast and lunch will be Wednesday, June 14th. Biology MCAS began today for all freshmen and testing will continue tomorrow.
That's a great report. Thank you. Now from south, Megan.
Hello. Sorry, my voice is a little gone tonight. On May 23rd, we had our combined choral and band concert at North's auditorium and it was a very successful event. On May 26th, we had our Class of 2017 Class Day, which was a fun way to celebrate the class. And it was the last assembly in the gym and it went on with few drips from the ceiling. May 31st was the preschool graduation and we had eight preschoolers graduate. May 31st was also the senior awards night and we gave out $129,000 in scholarships and awards. June 1st, the seniors danced together for the last time at the Pompanessa Inn. June 3rd, the 2017 class graduated at Memorial Hall. Today, Biology MCAS started for freshmen and continues into tomorrow. Tomorrow, June 6th, the underclassmen awards night is at 7:00. Wednesday, June 7th, at 8:00 AM, the freshman awards are in the cafeteria. And Wednesday at 7:00 at night is the meet the coaches night. And Saturday, June 10th, from 10:00 to 1:00, is our student alumni walkthrough for the Old Plymouth South. And that's all.
Thank you, Megan. Also a comprehensive report. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is old business. Is there any, Dr. Miestis?
Yes, just to look at the agenda for one minute, we, on 2.1, we have our visual arts student presentations. And on item 2.1, I think we might have jumped over that, so.
Right after the pledge.
Okay, I'm looking at an agenda that was probably, I'm following the wrong agenda. I have one that doesn't have it on it.
Okay.
But I appreciate the correction. And we have a really enjoyable part of our evening this evening to recognize the artistic skills of many of our students. Now, in a moment, Dr. Miestis would tell us what this is about, but I want everybody here to know that Dr. Miestis, with the assistance of Vice Chairman, Ms. Kim Hunt, will be making the award presentations. But Dr. Miestis.
Yes, thank you. So, welcome, everybody. I know you're here in anticipation of your children receiving recognition for their artwork. Their artwork has been displayed at my office, at Central Office, on South Meadow Road. And I know many of you have had the opportunity to walk through and find their art. And I can tell you, Mr. Capel removed the art earlier, actually, at the end of last week. And I tell you, we miss it greatly. It's absolutely wonderful pieces of work and I think it identifies the talent that your kids have and also the future artists that we have coming out of our school district. So, at this time, what we're going to do is I'm going to be assisted by Mrs. Hunt, the Vice Chair of the School Committee. And we will be handing out certificates to our students. Keep in mind that this school committee tonight is being televised live and will also be aired in the future. And we also have it on the internet. So, you can share this moment with family members across the world, across the country, so that you can, they can see themselves actually walk across and a moment of pride for you and for them. So, at this point, we will begin. Thank you. Just make sure this is working great. All right, so we are going to begin with Federal Furnace Elementary School. And Isabel Blitzer. Her name is Isabella. I said that wrong. And Federal Furnace Elementary School, Jervon Jackson. And I have Lila Shay. Mary Pizano. And Eleanor Edsel. Shay Donnelly, Nathaniel Morton Elementary. Kazuki Gallo. Victoria Martin. Violet Obatani. Jaden LaPlante, West Elementary. Samuel Kelly. Miranda Ulet. Cameron Sherwood. Evan Jones. Olivia Torini, Indian Brook Elementary. Nima Maloney, Indian Brook Elementary. Sarah Densmore, South Elementary. Paul Belcher. Emmeline Furtado. Morgan Henderson. Sabrina Bell. Oliver Tunks. Hunter Lasage. Clara Kiradasi. Maggie Fabry. Michael Bonney. Elise Magica. Michael Hannan, Cold Spring. Christopher Porter, PCIS. John Hoben. Carter Mento. Anthony Sacalini. Sacalini, I'm sorry. Victorio Roveto. Ella Derby. Carly Schofield. Samantha Moore. Chanel Bryant, Plymouth South Middle. Maria Ballas, Plymouth South Middle. Riley Burke. Kayla Abraham. Samantha Bisson. Colleen Luongo, Plymouth South High School. Terrigan Gascoigne. Kalen Thean, Plymouth North High School. Jerianne Newton. Ashley Martell. Miriam Mendel. And last, Plymouth North High School, Parker Goodall. So, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. This is marvelous to see you all here to support your children and to support the Plymouth Public Schools. We are really looking forward to the future of our VPA program. And hopefully, your kids can take part in that and enjoy what we have to offer in the future. So, thank you so much and we hope your kids have a great summer. Thank you.
It's a good time to go now?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
The little, little one? Oh, my gosh.
Good to see you.
I know, I was like... Oh, I know. I know, there they go. But the chorus is coming in next, right?
Yes.
The chorus coming in next or afterwards?
The chorus is coming in. Probably have the right gender.
She stands up anywhere.
My mom's friend put pictures up of Sal's graduation, like, one of the balconies. My mom's like, "I saw you." And I sit next to Michelle, she's like, "You're distant."
It's like, "Miriam, my hat."
It's always nice to watch this.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Miestis. Thank you.
You're not on. Is your mic on?
Thank you, Dr. Miestis, and thank you, Ms. Hunt. The next item on our agenda this evening is old business. Is there any reason to bring up something on our old business? Ms. Hunt?
I know it's not on old business anymore, but I just wanted to follow up and make sure that we're going to address the school supplies early again this year because that worked out so good last year. I just wanted to mention it.
I think the form and function of what we did last year is the practice moving forward. So, yeah. Things should be the same moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other committee members with reference to old business? Okay, new business. Committee members with something on the new business agenda item?
I actually, I think, I...
Mr. Selly?
Yeah, this might be the right platform for me to bring this up. It's pertaining to the handbook and possibly policy. I had a parent call me today whose child had graduated from Plymouth North High School on Saturday. I think we needed some clarification. I'm not sure if it's a policy or handbook thing regarding military sashes at graduation at Plymouth North. She was under the impression her son was not able to wear it. However, I recognized a few students who very proudly wore their sashes. So, I think we need to really clarify and address what it is. For me, from an advocacy perspective, these students sign up very young to commit themselves to something greater than I think we could all even imagine at 17 years old. It's a concern, I think, of mine really, to be able to support these kids. So, I think we just need some clarification for the families who have kids going in, who have enlisted, to clarify what our policy is and why, if they cannot wear these sashes, is that the rule. So, that's my question tonight. They were told that the principal was not allowing it. So, he followed the rules. He did not wear his Air Force sash, which he proudly wanted to wear that day. So, they're extremely disappointed, I think. And I myself, I think, from a district, it's, you know, these kids commit to something extremely responsible. And they sign on a line that they can't go back and change their mind on. So, I think we need to be able to support them because it's the ultimate civic responsibility to sign yourself up for our armed forces. So, I think we need a little bit of clarification, not just to this family, but to our military families in general, whose kids are going in.
Dr. Campbell?
Yeah, I was just going to support what Mr. Selly just said, that there is no policy against that, clearly. Which, having gone to both graduations, you'd recognize that, I think. And we can certainly clarify any misconceptions or misunderstandings that exist there because that should not be...
So, that's, I think, what we, we either owe this family an apology because I think he was, he's a remarkable young man who is a rule follower. And I think he was told he cannot. And seeing students, myself, I saw a few students that day that proudly wore those sashes. And I think we need to support these kids. So, this particular individual, I think we need to clarify what happened because they were told he could not. So, that's the platform I'm coming at.
Afterwards, perhaps get more details about specifics in that case.
Absolutely. I did say that I would bring it up tonight because I think we owe them some dialogue.
And I think everybody at this table is very glad that you brought it up. And I think everybody at this table, if we want to extend a public apology, we do. Because the policy has been in the past that those sashes were recognized. So, I don't know how it came to pass that the recognition got changed.
And I'm not sure if it's in the handbook where there's anything specific. I haven't had the time to really thoroughly run through it where it says no. But this particular student, a remarkable young man, and I think he is a rule follower. So, if he was told no, he was told no. So, we just need to find, I think, the gray area and fix it.
Dr. Miestis?
Well, let me just say that I will call the family myself to let them know that there really is a great desire for us to express a level of acknowledgement. And that should not have been the case. Okay, so I'll make the call. But on the other side, it is not in the handbook. And it's not in any rulebook or policy that we have in the district. So, it's one thing that we can definitely follow through with.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up. Anything else on the new business? The superintendent's report. Dr. Miestis?
Yes, I have a couple of items to report this evening. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the faculty, staff, administration of both high schools for the graduation. I think all of us, everyone was there and school committee members, thank you so much for being there and supporting our graduates. As many of us said during the ceremony, it is what we look forward to in the roles that we are in. From kindergarten or preschool all the way up to the time they graduate, we look forward to the day that they cross that stage because it means so much to everybody. And it was a great organization. And behind the scenes, the amount of effort that it takes to get everything ready and the names just right and all of that is pretty important. So, I want to acknowledge everyone, our support staff, all the way to administration, to be able to help us get that done. I had the opportunity this afternoon to talk to Mr. Finnegan to get an update on the Plymouth South High School project. Talked to him three times today. Later this afternoon, I had the opportunity to share some information back and forth with Mr. Finnegan. I will be walking through the building Wednesday morning early with the architect, the owner's project manager, and the contractor to kind of get an update of where we are on the project. We are very, very close to having an occupancy permit. We just want to make sure that we are at that stage where we can let the contractor off the hook for where they need to be as far as completion, which is substantial completion. And that's that next benchmark that we're looking for. With that said, Mr. Finnegan has offered the school committee an update tour of the project on June 19th at 9:00 in the morning. That's a Saturday morning. So, if you have the opportunity to clear your calendar, do an hour tour. The elevators are operating, so we can cover most of that building in an hour. So...
June 19th is Monday.
Okay, whatever the Saturday is.
17.
17?
That'd be June 17th.
June 17th.
What time was it at?
9:00 AM.
9:00.
June 17th. Sorry.
You said 9:00 AM, correct?
9:00 AM. Okay. So, if that's something I believe that you would probably like to get through there and kind of get an update for your own eyes to see the difference from, you know, what completion, substantial completion is. It's pretty, we've come a long way. So, I think you'll be very pleased with where we are. So, just mark your calendars. And the next item I have is, we do have tonight copies of the official school calendar for next year. This has incorporated the dates that were passed by school committee early this year, incorporated into refrigerator calendar for you to take home and adjust your calendars appropriately. And the next item I have is, as was mentioned by our students earlier tonight, we have a couple of weeks of school left. And the last day is the 19th. And we just happen to have a school committee meeting that night. So, moving along here. So, thank you, everybody, for Saturday. It was a great day. And with that said, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Committee members with response to Dr. Miestis, are there any questions on his report? All right. We're now down to retirements. Ms. Frye?
Yes, we have three retirements tonight. Dr. Kathy Babini, who has been our social studies coordinator in many roles for many, many years. Janice Kayant, who's a consulting teacher of literacy from South Elementary School. And Margaret Turner, who's a phys ed and health teacher at South Middle School.
Ms. Hunt?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, we thank these individuals for their time and dedication to the Plymouth Public Schools and wish them a happy retirement.
Ms. Hunt, correspondence? Oh, Mr., thank you.
No correspondence this evening.
No correspondence this evening. And now we have another very exciting part of our agenda this evening. Dr. Miestis?
Yes, tonight, we are very honored to share with you our Plymouth International Chorus. They will be traveling to England later this month. And they are here tonight to present to you a couple of songs. And if we could move over to the audience side of the center, that would be, that would be great.
Hi, everybody. We just, we want to, first of all, tonight's my, this is part of my program update. So, I hope this is credited for the program update. Clearly, this is, this is part of that. And so were the art awards. And so my actual speech will be about three minutes, so you'll all be happy. But this group, 30 young individuals from across the district have been rehearsing since March, March, March-ish. They auditioned in October, November. A pretty rigorous process. They've slowly gotten to know each other. They are a fabulous group of young people that we're going to take abroad. And when we say musical ambassadors, they really have embraced that. Not only are they talented, which you'll hear in a minute, but they're extremely hardworking, diligent, creative, and just amazing young people. So, the Plymouth International Chorus.
Our first song is Benedictus.
Trees are green and the air is sweet. The good earth is singing underneath my feet. I'll point my feet down the freedom line. Walking that road, I'm feeling fine. Trees are green and the air is sweet. The water is sapping under my feet. I'll point my feet down the freedom line. Walking that road, I'm feeling fine. Water is sapping and the air is sweet. The water comes sapping under my feet. I'll point my feet down the freedom line. Walking that road, I'm feeling fine. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Sun is arising in my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Sun is arising in my soul.
So this is just a wonderful group of people, as you just heard, but I would like to say a special thanks to Karen DeVoe and Kathy McMinn, who are directing this group this time around countless and countless and countless hours. So can we have a nice round of applause for them? And then Judy Pont, our accompanist, who's been with us for years and years and years, playing behind the scenes. Thank you, Judy. So if you want to hear more, next Monday, yes, next Monday, same place, six thirty. They're going to be doing their whole set for their friends and family as a going away concert. It will be kind of their last time together before we hit the tour, right? Awesome. Congratulations, you guys. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. I apologize.
I speak to the whole school, the central office, all we can say is wow. Wow. And I'm going to tell you, when you folks enter an international competition, if you don't win, have them call us.
Smile, smile, smile.
Shut up.
Smile, smile, smile.
Good job, good job.
Excellent.
That was great.
It was.
Tell Mike you can go home.
Yes, see you later, Mike. We're done.
That's nice.
It would be great to have them at every meeting, wouldn't it? At every meeting, you know? It would be fantastic.
We'll get more attendance.
It's hard act to follow, though.
It brings tears to your eyes. It really does.
That's what we try to do, make people cry.
What is that?
Okay, well, now we have to get serious. An out-of-state field trip. Dr. Mestes?
Actually, we have, the, the performance tonight was
Be quick.
was part of Mr. Cable's program update. So he has a little bit more to go.
Hi, everybody. Mike Cable, coordinator of visual performing arts for the Plymouth Public Schools. Thank you all very much for allowing me to come here and have all meeting long with the art awards, the visual art awards, and certainly the, a little taste of the Plymouth International Chorus. I really appreciate it. And I do have a little bit of a program update. I will be conscious of time and try to move this along as much as possible. But again, thank you for having me. So the visual and performing arts program in the last couple of years has continued to evolve and continued to grow, not without challenges. This picture that you're seeing now is a combined Plymouth South High School and Plymouth North High School call trip that they just went to DC last month. A great combined effort by so many different people. And it's just great to see young people come together in the arts, travel, and kind of bring what they learn out into the community. And that's the community of Plymouth, that's the community of Plymouth, U.K., and that's Washington, D.C. this year as well. So this, I just can't be prouder of this organization, the visual and performing arts, with the support of central office and all the principals. This really does take a team, a great team effort. But we'll get into kind of our mission a little bit and what we try to do. You just heard those kids, those students, and they were pretty good, right? Pretty, they're pretty good. Yeah. So the arts and all of the arts, whether we're talking about visual arts and drawing or we're talking about making films or we're talking about singing or playing instruments are all teachable skills. They're all learnable. Reading and writing is a learnable skill. Math is a learnable skill. These are skills that can be taught. Sometimes people have a little bit more aptitude. I don't particularly have a great aptitude for math, but I still have to do it, right? And I still have to work at it. And it's still a learnable skill, right? It's kind of like the growth mindset. We can learn to do something. We can't have a chorus like that in middle school and a few high school age kids just by snapping our fingers and rehearsing a few times. The reason why we have that chorus is because we have a continual vertically aligned curriculum starting in kindergarten and they start to find their voices, in this particular case in kindergarten, and they start to move and learn rhythm in kindergarten. So it really is, it's not magic. It's not magic. There's nothing magic about it. It's just like any, any other skill. You break it down. You have amazing staff and amazing teachers that can break those skills down and scaffold those up and then you can have performances and groups like that. But it's, it's not magic and it doesn't happen in just a couple of weeks. And that's, that goes to our comprehensive arts program, which is one of our missions. One of our big points is that we have to prepare, start preparing our students to learn the arts in kindergarten and all the way through. And the arts are for everybody. Everybody can learn. And if you guys want to learn how to do a self-portrait sometime, come see me and we can teach you all how to draw. And I
I don't know if I want that.
It's true. You might not, you might not want it, but we can do it. We can, we can make it happen. So it's, it's really arts for everyone. It's not an extra. It's something that's, that's part of the curriculum here in Plymouth and I want to just thank you all and thank administration, thank all the principals and all of us as a community that value the arts. And then connecting to the, connecting to the greater community, that's what we want to do. We learn skills in the classroom, but we don't want to keep them in the classroom. We don't make, we don't want to make drawings or paintings or sing songs in closets or showers. We want to have performances. We want them to come out and sing before you. We want them to sing in public. They want to go to their concerts. Their concerts, certainly in the upper levels in, in middle school or high school, are really their final exams, right? They're their final, they're their midterms or their final exams. That's their final assessment. They, they're, we're teaching them how to do, we're teaching them a skill, we're teaching them how to work together. Well, they have to then go and do it and they have to do that in a real world way and we want to connect to the community. And that, that is one of our, our goals for sure. Speaking about connecting to the community, this is kind of, last year, we had, I mean, this year, excuse me, forty-plus concerts across the district. We've had eighty other additional events and those additional events could be anything from elementary, middle school, and high school musicals. They would include large events like our youth arts month where we had five hundred-plus pieces of artwork at the Plymouth Center for Art downtown, multiple art shows, festivals and competitions, both in art and music that kids enter and teachers travel to, to have them audition, to get into districts and then to get into all state. All of this takes a tremendous amount of, of work, certainly by the student, but also by the staff and the teachers to make this work. That includes arts integration projects, which I will get into in a little bit, and also Red Sox games, performing at Red Sox games, UMass Band-Aid, et cetera. So again, our goal to try to bring the skills that we teach in the classroom, but it's not just about the end product, it's about the process. And it's not just about, we want to entertain, but it's not just about entertainment, it's about that assessment. So these great community events are really opportunities and assessments and hopefully they entertain and, and show the public that they're getting a big bang for their buck when it comes to their investment into arts education. Some highlights from this year, we have a new a cappella group down at South High School, South Avenue. They have grown tremendously in one year. They've been together for one year. They're just doing auditions, I think, this week coming up for their second year. It's, it's absolutely a pleasure to see an a cappella group at South High School as well. Music immersion. If anybody wants to come tomorrow morning, we, we won't rest after this presentation, but tomorrow we will have all third and fourth graders in the district at Memorial Hall for the capstone of our music immersion program, which is, is a project that we work with the Plymouth Philharmonic, one of our main partners in, in crime, if you will, here in Plymouth, where the third and fourth graders will have a private concert by the Plymouth Philharmonic. That is something, that money is raised, we've, we've done it many different ways. When it started, when Kathy McMinn started it years and years ago, she wrote grant after grant after grant to get that going. It is, it has now been a few years and it's been noticed and there is a funder that pays that bill, basically, and that equals about forty thousand dollars. That's not just for the concert, but we have those small groups, those small ensembles, families of musicians go into each elementary school and perform a short concert and really educate the kids about strings or brass or percussion in, in those schools. And that is a great partnership. That's a mission of the Philharmonic and certainly a shared mission from the visual performing arts in the Plymouth Public Schools. Our coffee house is always one of my favorite events and this year we combined that with the PIC concert a few weeks ago. And Empty Bowls, if you were, I know a lot of you are able to come to that and that's wonderful. This year, we hit a new milestone for our third Empty Bowls fundraiser. We raised over four thousand dollars for the South Shore Community Action Council and that money primarily will go to our backpack program that, that is funded here. So it goes right back to our, our community and our families. We won a VPA Artie Award. So the Plymouth Area for the Arts gives out awards for great arts organizations and individuals. They recognize the whole department of the visual and performing arts of the Plymouth Public Schools, which was a, which was a great acknowledgement for our teachers and our staff and our students. NESBA championship, which we won in 2015, that was last year, but we have not done a program update. That was a miraculous and amazing accomplishment, so I definitely wanted to put that down. And then, of course, our DC trip and our upcoming trip in a couple of weeks to Plymouth, U.K. So we're a little busy. I want to talk a little bit about some curriculum updates that are, that are happening and will be happening. Kindergarten is now a full day for everyone. We have implemented the art and music curriculum a couple of years ago when it was choice-based, but we are now expanding that to all kindergartners. All kindergarten students receive one hour of instruction in art and music per week and we really take advantage of that earlier time to start to develop those skills in music of, of rhythm primarily and voice and singing and then some fine motor skills in, in the art areas as well. We are introducing a new AP course next year at both high schools. It'll be AP Studio 3D. So basically, the exam is broken up into different, into different opportunities for students. It's two-dimensional, it's drawing, and it's 3D. And 3D is a little specialized. So we are, we have such a demand for ceramics and other three-dimensional art classes, sculpture, for instance, advanced sculpture, that we have created a demand for a higher level, upper level art course in three-dimensional arts. So there will be a specific course for three-dimensional AP studio at both schools and that will run at both schools. The demand was absolutely there. We will be training some new teachers to do that. We will be sending them to the AP Institute this summer. So that's really exciting. Two AP art studios in, two AP classes, excuse me, in the visual arts and of course our AP music theory class in the music department. We have started a new music technology course and that will run for the first time next year. We are started, trying to stay up with trends, if you will, technology. Music is made in lots of different ways. Music is made by singing, playing instruments, but it's also playing with computers and sounds and sampling and recording. So we are starting an introduction to music technology course where students will learn how to record, proper recording techniques, and also creating music electronically and some sampling, some recording, some live music and mixing that, that in. And we are very curious to see how this goes. Like everything, it's kind of a pilot program. The demand, when we put this course out there for course selection, was very high, was very high. And matter of fact, in, we are running two sections at one school and one section at the And matter of fact, we are running two sections at one school and one section at the other school for the first year, and kids have never seen this before. So they're curious. And if we can do a good enough job keeping them curious, then we look to kind of develop maybe even a little bit more of a program in technology, music, as time goes on. Another curriculum update is the strings program at the high schools. There is now, started this year and moving into next year, is a full-time strings course. So we have been building for a number of years, as you know, from the elementary on up. We have hired an elementary strings teacher. We have hired great instrumental teachers at the elementary level. That's being carried through in the middle school. It's building. And it's gotten far enough in the high school that we have had our own strings course there. So that's just like, that's just like our chorus, that's just like our band. It's every other day, all year long, for strings. That's very, very exciting, and it continues to build. And as we look at the numbers of incoming elementary string students, I envision those classes getting bigger and bigger. And at some point, and we'll get to this in a minute, is kind of figuring out how then we take a strings program and a band program and make an orchestra program. And we'll kind of talk about that in just one second. Arts integration has been a push for us in the last couple of years. We have had some kind of pilot programs and some teachers that have really taken leads at Cold Spring Manimate and Plymouth South Middle School, that have really worked with staff in other content areas and created curriculum where it's arts integration. So real quick, arts integration is where you hit the curriculum of whatever subject you're doing, say it's science or math, and then you're still hitting the curriculum and your major points with the art. And they're kind of a synergic combination of the two. And they work together, and the students and the teachers work together to teach the skills simultaneously in a science class and then in an art class and come together. Really giving meaning to learning for many, many students who learn in an artistic way. I'm sorry, I'm trying to go, I'm trying to go as fast as I can. Challenges. We don't have any challenges. Life is perfect. So these are just some challenges that we face. It's sometimes staffing after-school programs. We do a lot after-school. I ask a lot of my staff and they respond in a great, great manner. But sometimes, you can only go so far and you can only ask so much. One example of that would be our Coffee House. We could do more Coffee Houses as far as the kids go. They would come, they would perform, people would come and watch them. But with all the events that we're doing, plus asking staff to continually go out and work, it is an issue. So that is something that we try to balance. And we try to balance because we don't, it is not my vision nor anyone's, I don't believe, to push staff to where they say, no, please, no, no, thank you. Another challenge for us is our elementary spaces. When it comes to general music, general art, when it comes to music lessons that we do during the day, especially in some of our older, smaller schools, space is a continual challenge. We will continue to do what we can to mitigate those and find solutions, and we do. They're just not the most perfect solutions. We have a great elementary staff. We have a great elementary principals. We all work very well together to try to find that. But some of those spaces aren't conducive to the same environment that other buildings get. And that's something, that's a challenge that I take personally, and we want to try to, again, mitigate as much as we can. High school course requests. We've had almost 2,700 primary course requests and 4,270 secondary high school course requests. We can't meet those. There's no way we can. So we are kind of getting to where we're trying to figure out breadth and depth and have everybody try it, but also creating a matriculating program so we can prepare kids to go on and study music and study art. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. It's a good problem to have. Don't get me wrong. It's just supply and demand. And I'll take that, I'll take that problem anytime we can, or that challenge anytime we can. Transportation costs continue to rise, and we work the best we can to make that happen. Gary Costin and getting more of our athletic buses has been a godsend. And anytime we can get them, we can work within budget. Sometimes that's an issue of doing that because we just keep sending kids places. We just have more programs and we're busing kids in more places. We continue to, sorry, just laughed a little bit. I'm not sure if Mrs. Holmes is behind me laughing. But our band truck continues to have challenges. And we are looking into creative ways to meet some of those challenges. It is difficult to maintain a large truck for half the year and then have half the year, it doesn't, it doesn't get used all that much. So we are, again, trying to be creative about some of those challenges. And then finally, managing some of the performing art spaces. We have, we are enormously grateful and lucky to have soon two, actually, three performing arts spaces with the two performing arts centers and then the all-inclusive room, yeah, like that, yeah, at Plymouth South Middle that could be used as a small performance space as well. With, it's, signing that out, it's the pack managers, it's taking care of it. It's just, it's just a challenge. There's nothing, there's no way around it. But it's looking for creative solutions in staffing to have a more consistent approach to both those spaces. So we'll be, we'll be looking at that in the future as well. I'm tired. I apologize. I'm just going to fly through this. So we want to do increased arts integration. We're continuing to go with our UK partnerships with the choir, and we have a new one, a new partnership coming in the visual arts, and we'll talk about that in more depth at a future time. But we are partnering with the Plymouth College of Art in Plymouth, UK on a visual arts project across the pond as well. Looking at arts pathways at the high school. So those kids that want to study and they know they want to study art and they want to prepare a portfolio, it is very difficult and challenging and sad sometimes. This happened today when I got wind of someone that's going to be a senior at one of our high schools and says, I want a portfolio to apply to art schools for the following year. One year and not taking art courses in the high school is a very difficult challenge. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's a very difficult challenge. And so to identify and kind of create a pathway for those chosen students earlier on will make their high school art career or music career a little bit easier and a little bit more successful after they leave high school. Technology courses meet the demand, of course, is our orchestra program. So last Thursday night, there was the first orchestra that I've seen, and I'm not saying this has not happened in the past, but Plymouth Community Intermediate School combined their strings program, their seventh and eighth strings program, with some seventh and eighth grade wind players and created an orchestra. And they played one piece, and it was fabulous. To hear a middle school orchestra in the Plymouth Public Schools, it truly gave me chills. So we will look to kind of find those opportunities for string performers and wind performers and percussionists to play together in an orchestra. If I was, if sometimes Dr. Miasis looks at me and says, well, if you had all the money in the world, what would you do? No, he doesn't. Our theater program is continuing to grow in elementary, middle, and high school as well. And that is all after-school. It would be wonderful in some future to be able to expand our theater program in a curricular way, meaning during-the-day curricular program, to be able to continue to grow the theater program. I think Plymouth is prime for that right now. And we've also tossed around the idea, and this is, there's pros and cons to this, but a fine arts high school graduation requirement, the state of Massachusetts does suggest that. It's complicated because if you did that and you made sure every single person under our current staffing levels, you got to be careful what you wish for, because then we wouldn't have a deep program and we wouldn't have something that matriculated and got to our other purpose, which was to prepare students for after-school, after-high-school programs in art or music, because everybody would be teaching intro courses. So it's something that's in the back of our minds. We've had conversations at central office and with principals, but it's certainly something we want to do, but we're going to be very careful about as we move forward in the future. Also, summer classes, summer courses, we're doing seven summer camps this year. It's the most we've done in any summer. So there's something for everybody in performing arts, visual arts, or theater.
Can you sing a song now?
Thankfully, my skills lie in other areas. So any questions or comments are certainly welcome.
Any members' questions? Ms. Badger.
I just have two questions. So would the arts pathway, would that be something like the Project Lead the Way pathway? Or would it be something, like, how would you do it?
So you could, you could do it in many different ways. Basically, what you could do is try to identify students early on, either as freshmen or sophomores, and create a pathway of courses and have them apply or audition into it. And then that would be their pathway, and they would be guaranteed those classes kind of through their matriculating years of high school and end at AP and end with a higher performing ensemble or a capstone project in the visual arts. So similar to that. But we could do it in multiple ways. The goal really would be, again, to identify and, you know, it's a balancing act because you don't want to pigeonhole kids, you know? I'm always afraid of pigeonholing them, but I'm also, there are the kids that know in seventh grade that I want to be a graphic designer or all I do is draw and this makes me the happiest thing in the world and I can make a living at it. So if we are able to have something for them, I think it's a benefit. It's just making sure that doesn't detract from some other part of the program.
My next question is, we've all heard the discussion about after the, oh my gosh, Les Mis and how everybody really enjoyed it. Are we going to be doing any more unified north-south or is it completely separated? Or has that decision yet to be made and it's just going to work its way out?
I'm just going to get some water.
Sorry. That's a very good place. Sorry, it's my last question, I promise.
So that's a great, that's a great question, Ms. Badger. So here's where I am on it. Here's where we are with it. The more opportunity we have for students to be successful and try to be onstage, I think, is my primary mission. There is an amazing thing when students from, in this town, when students from middle schools or high schools work together. And we're certainly in the VPA for that. Examples would be Coffee House. Our students four times a year get together and perform there. Another example would be Marching Band. Another example would be a cappella, actually, because now at South Avenue, they went to three competitions together this year. They took the same transportation, the same competition and worked together for the same thing. So we're not, we're not opposed to that at all. And I also think there's other ways to still keep, finding ways to combine things, but also give more opportunities. And that's what we continue to have conversations about. So just a word about Les Mis. That killed, that almost killed a few people. Not me, by any means. It was a miraculous production with an enormous team, an enormous amount of work. And the only downside to that is creating an expectation that there'll be performances like that every year. And I can't guarantee there'll be performances, whether it was together or separate or anything like that. Les Mis is, it was a conversation leading, we see kids grow in high school and we see their voices and we see what they can act and do those things. And it was a timing thing. And we're like, oh, well, we have this, we have this amazing person we just hired that has a tremendous amount of experience directing. And that was directed by a new teacher, Jason Luciana, from Plymouth South High School, who's extremely talented and skilled in directing. And he added what was needed, plus the voices and the talent from both schools was needed for that, for sure. So I don't want to damper anyone's expectations, but I do. That was absolutely amazing. And I'm not saying that can't happen again, but it can't happen every year. The odds are, it just won't happen. I'm just being real about it. So I hope I kind of answered your question.
Thank you.
Ms. Hunt.
Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, I'm sure I'm not alone in saying that you're amazing and your department is doing a great job. And since you've been here and your department's been in effect, we've seen it go from here to here. I was really excited that you touched a little bit upon, like, doing some community education. And I know that we've talked about it in the past with the two new high schools being kind of a community center or continuing education. And would that be something that in the future, we could even use as revenue-producing if we offered things to the community or classes or?
Sure. I mean, I think.
Not to put more work on you.
No, 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 no.
Because I'm sure you're just swallowing hard right now.
No, I think in previous district that I've worked in, we used to, we used to have a summer program that was for kids and we had a summer program that was for adults taught by the staff.
Yeah.
So that's a model that could be used. You know, during, again, it comes to staffing, like, if I were to imagine off the top of my head that we did that during the year, the issue would be staffing because they're so, so busy. Not that we couldn't look, you know, for other contracted staff to do certain things because we could, but that would be a little bit more challenging without, so staffing would be my biggest kind of hurdle there.
I just could see it. I would sign up immediately. So I just think it would be a great opportunity if it's something that could be worked at.
A community chorus or, you know, a community arts classes and photography classes and graphic design classes. Absolutely.
I think one of the things that we've, we've had discussions at my office about is the opportunity to run with the nature of both high schools, evening and summer programming for adults.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we do have the facilities, we do have the instructors, and there is a need in the community for continuing education, whether it be on the hobby, fostering that creative side, or even just for personal development, for job enrichment, skill enrichment. So there is discussion about doing that. I think the hurdle that we have to cross is what's that breaking point of, or that break-even point of staffing and enrollment? And it's, you know, it would be a beginning, cover, your cost type of opportunity, but people bring it up all the time about the need to do it. We have an offer, and we have offered programs, you know, Endicott, we have Leslie, we have Bridgewater State, we have Cape Cod Community College, we have all these different courses. But there's absolutely no reason why we couldn't run a collaborative type of opportunity that we have control about what gets offered and how it gets published and how it gets really managed. But I think it fits right in with, how do we, and my dream is to keep these buildings open till 10:00, so that we have people in them all the time, but we have coverage and we have security and we have all these bits and pieces so that we utilize these buildings the way that we envision them to be utilized. So I believe in the years to come, the desire to have programming like this is a real possibility.
I have a little part, too. And I think, too, just with what you said, coming off of town meeting and justifying budgets and all that, and people saying that their taxes are affected and it's their buildings and they should be allowed to participate, I think that would do it. Do you do any interaction with the seniors? think that would do it. Do you do any interaction with the seniors center at all?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Because I didn't see anything in there about that, so I was just curious.
I'm sorry.
As to what? No, 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 no. I didn't mean it that way. I just meant-
Certainly, one, just off the top of my head, Empty Bowls. We do workshops over there. The kids go over there and have, the students have gone over there and taught classes themselves to the seniors over in the senior center. We've certainly provided some musical education in form of some entertainment during some lunches and things, both vocally and instrumentally. So, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
Just wanted to follow up with that, Ms. Hunt. Dr. Campbell is now on the board of the Council on Aging, or it's not Council on Aging anymore.
Center for Active Living.
Center for Active Living. And I, one of the bright spots about his participation is sitting at the table and looking at integration. So I think-
We've actually started, excuse me, an intergenerational subcommittee, so we're really looking at increasing opportunities, not just in visual and performing arts, but at the elementary schools in a variety of ways to really try to build that sense of community for our more senior residents.
Fantastic.
Can I just add one comment real quick? And I appreciate the kind words. It really is the staff. There are 44 amazing visually and performing arts teachers, secretaries at every building, custodians at every building, principals at every building, assistant principals at every building, central office. It really is a combined community to work, to bring these opportunities for kids to life. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you to everybody.
Other questions or comments?
I was just going to echo Ms. Hunt's comment. I've been on a school committee since 2009 with a short break in there. And I've seen the program take off under your leadership. And I've attended a lot of concerts and orchestra and plays, both as a school committee member and as a parent whose son is involved in the plays and the orchestra. And I really appreciate what we've done. And we can't rest on our laurels. We keep pushing forward, but it's just tremendous what you've done so far. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Maury.
Ms. Burgess?
And I just wanted to say, tomorrow morning, what time was that at tomorrow?
So the concert will be at 10:00 AM for about 1300, 3rd and 4th graders. But if you can make it, Margie, we'll get you a seat. Just let me know.
I just want to sort of, each year you come and I give you a little story about, as you know, my youngest is a composer, having gone through the system here. And I sort of learned a new, a new part of the music technology field. In addition to writing for movies and TV shows and live performances, he now has the ability to, when he has his free time, if he wants to write a five-minute romantic piece or a five-minute horror piece or a 10-minute classical piece, and he sends it up to the cloud and it sits up there. And now if a producer comes along and wants to do a commercial or a piece for a TV show or a cartoon, he goes up to the cloud, looks for the piece, of course, it's all labeled, downloads it, and then my son gets paid for that.
Yeah, very nice.
So there is money in music technology.
A hundred percent. Couldn't, absolutely. There is actually, you know, I didn't say that, but, sorry.
We're not paying for what's in the cloud from the stuff you've written, Mike. We're not doing that.
You don't want my stuff. Nobody wants my stuff.
This is in the cloud.
I've got a lot of things in the cloud. Though, the arts, all of them, and you make the point, are a viable form of employment. This idea of starving artists is not really accurate. And it continues to be a large economic engine, certainly in Massachusetts and certainly in this town. We look to the creation of the Plymouth Cultural District recently, with all the assets we have, even in downtown Plymouth, students could graduate, go to school, come back here and make a living.
That's good. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great conversation.
Thank you.
And he's not leaving. And now finally, the out-of-state field trip that I tried to do 20 minutes ago.
Sorry.
Here she comes.
We have Bonnie and Mike now, so he has a counterpart, so go ahead.
I'm going to just introduce this and introduce Ms. Holmes, who is the band director at Plymouth North High School, as well as the VPA department head at Plymouth North High School. We have been working to find a very enticing trip to our students. And I think we found one. And we are here to go over it and answer questions for you for Florida Citrus Parade Disney Music Performance in Orlando, December 29th through January 2nd. So I'm going to turn it over to-
And before you begin-
Yep.
You must be hearing pomp and circumstance in your brain, 30 times on some-
Was it 30 times? Does it count?
Yes, at least.
On the light side, on the conservative-
Afterwards, the kids always say, how many times did we play it? I say, I don't know. We just kept going. Actually, it's the recessional that I sing in my head more than pomp and circumstance. So this trip that we have proposed is to perform in the Florida Citrus Parade, which is about a mile and a half parade in downtown Orlando on Saturday, December 30th, then to do a performance in Disney with a concert band. This would be either Magic Kingdom or Epcot. That requires an application process. The goals of this trip are to get the ensemble, the marching band, to be performing in a large nationally televised parade, to continue to build these experiences and some of the opportunities that, some of the things that this band has done. Performing in a Disney park is a goal as well. It is, I've been told, a very, truly a magical experience, that it's amazing to be there because you see people from everywhere. And it is, it is an amazing experience for the students. And then always, the travel has the goal of just independence and, you know, opportunities of traveling in a group and going somewhere with your classmates and being responsible for yourself for a few days. So that is basically the trip. It's a, I do realize it's a fairly expensive trip for the five days that it is. We are proposing some fundraising opportunities as well as, you know, giving a lot of, you know, this six or eight months in order to pay for the trip. So, anything I can answer?
Committee members?
I'd like to move it. I'd like to move approval for the trip.
We have a motion to move it by Mr. Bagley, and we have a second by Ms. Burgess. I mean, yeah, Mrs. Burgess.
Yeah, that's it.
Any questions on the motion? Before we move the motion, I just want to, the sheet that, the qualifications for participation sheet-
Sure.
-that came with our package, it's fine. I think it needs to be tightened up a little bit.
Okay.
For example, it says, "Good academic standing." That should be tightened up a bit. Perhaps it should be "Academically eligible," because that's clear, that's in the handbook. "Good academic standing" is interpretable. So if we said, academically eligible, now we clearly know what we're talking about. "Have no current suspendable offenses." I understand that means if the child is suspended at the time of the trip, he cannot go.
Right.
Correct. I'm thinking that if a child was suspended the week before the trip, I'd be concerned about him going. So I'm wondering if we could tighten that up a little bit because I would like to have the, it does say on the bottom, the building administrator will have to sign off on it, but I would like to have it clear that, that even if it's not current suspendable, the building principal needs to sign off on it because something egregious could have happened the week before.
Absolutely. And we can certainly work on that and tighten that up. And I think we both take your comments clearly. I think one thing that we do want to do is have a conversation with administration of the building, with the principal, and also central office. We did come up with a scenario somewhat recently with a different trip, where the grading was a little bit tighter than it says right now. But that was, it wasn't an extracurricular trip, it was a curricular trip. So there's a little bit of a line there. So we, we want to be clear with our students, but also be able to be, have open, honest conversation with family and administration to make the best decision possible. I don't know if you, I mean, Patty, I've had these conversations with Patty as well.
And I would say that this trip is curricular for some students and extracurricular for others.
That's where it gets a little tricky, yeah.
Right. Because the marching band is an extracurricular, but concert band is curriculum.
Ms. Frye?
They do a tremendous, I've lived field trips for years, and they do a tremendous job of communicating up to the trip and monitoring the student's attendance and behavior and communicating with the administration. But there is a very fine line of if it's a class versus a quote-unquote extracurricular. So, but there are very clear lines that are delineated that they know. And they've done a tremendous job.
I'm glad to hear that. This isn't clear, but I'm glad to hear that.
Exactly. And I think the grayness has, we've grown into the grayness, to be honest, because of some logistical things over the years of, it's hard to explain, but there've been some situations. And I think we've always focused on the needs of the child, but also holding them accountable as well, but not being too black and white at all times. I will say, when I, I got to go to Florida Disney World for that crazy award I got, and I got to see the behind the scenes of the Disney arts, I sent you all the pictures. I had like Mickey ears with music. I was all excited. But what they offered, the Disney performing arts, is unbelievable, the education. I got to see the behind the scenes and you guys will love it. It's remarkable what they do for the kids and opportunities. So, it's kind of neat.
On the motion, Ms. Burgess. We have a motion on the floor. I mean-
So one thing that I just, it looks like such a cool experience, but the one, oh, my, I think the computer just went crazy. Anyways, there's a place where it says a $50 dining card and a $30. I hope you get the $50 one. So Jess, I would just work on that, make sure.
A little work to negotiate.
So just when you're looking at this and talking to them.
I'll work that out.
They probably give you a $30.
We had, honestly, we'd gone back through this itinerary a couple of times trying to cut the cost down from what it initially came in at. So that was where that came from.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? Okay, let's take the vote then electronically. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
There's a student bouncing up and down, in my view, from-
It was approved.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you so much for your all the time.
And just before we bring the next group to the table, we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. Okay, we're now, we are now back, back in session after our brief break, and we have some program director presentations. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we are pleased to have the Plymouth Family Network presentation for this evening, and the director of the Plymouth Family Network for a few, a couple of months is Trish DeCiaeta. And before Trish begins her presentation, I just want to acknowledge Trish for her many years of service to the Plymouth Public Schools. She is retiring for the second time. We asked her back, I don't know how many years ago.
Maybe like six years.
About six years ago. And she has done a fantastic job, has done that in the past. And I just want to share with you that we acknowledge all the work that you've done for the young families of Plymouth and the children of Plymouth. And now I'll let you talk.
Great.
Okay?
My pleasure. And tonight, I told Gary, I brought the A-Team. This is, this is the staff from the Plymouth Family Network, most of the staff. And I wanted to highlight them and the hard work that they do tonight, because they, I've brought parents in the past, and certainly that's paramount to what we do. But I thought that they could share personally some of their accomplishments and what they're involved in. So, I'm going to just give you really quickly a general look at where we are in Plymouth with programming and statistics for kids under five. So, there, depending on where you look, but there are about 3,200 children under five in Plymouth, and about 1,500 of them are in a licensed program or a school-based program. So, they are either in private centers, a licensed family childcare, an early childhood public school program, or the, actually, in the Plymouth South program. Some of them are part-time, some full-time. There's all kinds of ways that they do it, but at least 1,500 are in Plymouth in programs. And then, obviously, there are kids that are in informal care. Maybe they're with relatives or neighbors and that kind of thing, or their parents work double shifts. But about 70%, we know for sure, are actually working, and their children are not cared for by them at some point during the week. And about 988 children are actually, participate, believe it or not, in the Plymouth Family Network. So, that's, that's a really, that's a really big number. In some way, it could be a one-time thing, but, or the Early Childhood Fair, but that's the number for that. And then if we look at those that are subsidized in some way by federal or state dollars, or by the public school programs, you can see that we also have a significant number. So, about 35% of kids, 530, are in a program that receives either Head Start federal funding, and there are, I think there are 214 kids in that program, and 174, I'm sorry, there are 214 that receive services at here, at PCIS in the Early Childhood Center, 21 at South, and 121 are subsidized and are in private centers in Plymouth. So, they meet state median income, 50% of it. So, a family of four, that would be about $32,000 a year to get into that program. And Head Start, the income level is only $24,000 for a family of four to get into that program. There is a state waitlist, and to get into these programs, and there are about 35 children under five that are waiting. There has not been any new funding for that program in many years, two or three years. So, that number reflects, that doesn't reflect who actually could use the program, because a lot of people just lose interest. They know that the waitlist is two or three years long, and they don't sign up for it. We do send our program information to every child that's added to the waitlist, the state waitlist, every month, so that they are aware, if they're waiting for some kind of program or resources, that they can come to us. And we also send information to the Head Start waitlist. The next slide is, these are children that are receiving some kind of social or educational services above and beyond just a regular preschool. So, in our program, we have 882, as I mentioned, and there are 125 children at the Early Childhood Center with IEPs. There are 170 kids under three that, from Plymouth, that receive early intervention. They're zero to three, and they have a specialized home visiting program for their special needs. There are 26 teen parent families from Plymouth. And then the number from Department of Children and Families, I couldn't get the Plymouth number specifically, but there are 1,000 children served by the Plymouth area offers, office from the Department of Children and Families. We also surveyed the directors, when I called them, about their enrollment and things like that recently, just to kind of, we're looking at the trends and looking at the needs assessment issues. And I know you're not surprised that the trends are grandparents with the kid, in the care of their children, and just those that are in centers in Plymouth, so they're actually in some kind of childcare setting. There were 37, and under 18 from the census, there are 211 families in Plymouth that are caring for their grandchildren. So, that's a significant issue. We've been working with other resources to, to kind of see what we can do to support those families. And that's a goal for next year because of that. We do have grandparents come to our programs, and we do try to connect them to resources. But expanding our knowledge base about, you know, just legal aspects of, of what can support them and other specific resources just for them. There are some resources, but there, there could be more. It's a very unique situation, as you can imagine. And then the other things anecdotally is that, from ours, that there's more father involvement, which is a great thing. And so, looking at programming specific to dads, making it really kind of pull dads in. And I think that's it for our anecdotal kinds of, oh, and the social-emotional needs, but I've said that every year that I've been here, and behavioral needs. All of the directors, if you call the Early Childhood Directors in Plymouth and many other communities, obviously nearby, they say that they're escalating, if you ask them why do they think it is, they say that, that families are very busy. They, they always say, they think screen time has impacted kids younger and younger. And then, and then they, they're not sure. There's a lack of resources for families with very young kids for mental health services, because it's a specialized kind of thing. So, those are the three, three issues. We, we do offer an ASQ, a screening for social emotional, for any, any family with, with a child under six, or we can get them to a resource for that. So. And then, there's a little bit of good news. Our funding has been level-funded for the last four years, or three years, and this year, we just submitted a competitive RFP for a three-year grant, hopefully, and there was a 12% increase in that proposal. So, we'll have a little increase if we receive the grant. We should know next week, and I'm sure we will receive it. So, so that's, I'm going to end with a little bit of good news, and then I'm going to introduce, like I said, the A-Team here, and this is, Kathleen Campbell is next to me, and she's a parent-child educator, and she's going to talk about the parent education and the literacy pieces of our program. Yeah, sorry.
That's all right. And so, we offer these playgroups for families. All playgroups provide a time of structured free play, followed by a snack, story, and circle time. Our playgroups serve children from birth through school ages, you can see. The Parent Power Playgroup, which is listed there, begins with a 45-minute parent-child structured playgroup, followed by a 45-minute parent discussion group, which is facilitated by Sue West from BID Plymouth, which a lot of people probably know. She's wonderful, and we're lucky to have her, working with us. As part of our playgroups, families participate in the Raising a Reader program. The state has mandated that CFCEs, like the Plymouth Family Network, use an evidence-based early literacy program like Raising a Reader. And we have been implementing, implementing Raising a Reader for the past five years with much success and positive feedback from families. Raising a Reader uses a pre- and post-survey to assess the effectiveness of the program. We included the year-end survey in your attachments, if you want to look at that. The vast majority of our families are already reading regularly with their children, which is wonderful. What this graph shows is the demonstrable, demonstrable growth in how parents are reading to their children. Dialectic reading, which is what the graph is showing the growth in, is about children and adults having a conversation about a book. We model examples of dialogic reading during our storytime, and we give parents ideas on how to get more involved with their child and actively involved in reading. Children who have been read to dialogically are substantially ahead of children who have been read to traditionally on tests of language development. So, as you can see from the pictures, parents and children really enjoy this program, as you can see from the comments they make, and then the adorable kids we have. So, we provide many literacy and STEM events, activities throughout the year. In our playgroups and literacy events, we have given out more than 600 books for children to take home. We have enjoyed sharing our space with the Plymouth Early Childhood Center this year. Our new family registrations have increased from FY16 to FY17, 100 to 145, in part due to PEC families being more aware of our programming from sharing the space with us. We also continue to enjoy being in PCIS. We have a longstanding relationship with PCIS students and staff that is beneficial in doing events such as Little Engineers, Big Ideas, which is a great event we do every year with the teachers here at PCIS. Yeah. And as you can see from the pictures, our PFA children and students from PCIS are really having a great time together.
That's a wind tunnel in the middle picture.
Yeah. It captured his expression. It's just adorable. So, to support parents as an active partner in their child learning and development, we offer a set of questionnaires. Tricia mentioned the ASQ. It looks how children are doing in important areas listed on this slide. I believe we included the 24-month ASQ as an example in your attachment. If a child is having trouble with some skills, we can support a parent with the next steps. Parents may be given activity suggestions to support their child with these skills, and then we rescreen them. And some parents are referred to their pediatrician or early intervention. Finding delays or problems as early as possible supports a young child's healthy development. And we have the numbers on the slide there of, of what we've referred in this year.
Thanks, Kathleen. Now, we're going to have Judy from our parent-child home visiting program, which is a, a national program. It's also an evidence-based literacy program, and Judy will describe it for you.
Well, PCHP reaches families where they live. PCHP early learning specialists travel to all points in Plymouth. This year, PCHP visited families as far south as Surfside on Route 3A, north as Stanish Ave, and southwest as the Ponds of Plymouth. PCHP families are challenged by poverty, isolation, limited educational opportunities, language and literacy barriers, and other obstacles to healthy development and educational success. Additional challenges for Plymouth families include mental illness of the parents, their health, grandparents raising grandchildren, siblings receiving special education services, English as a second language, and lack of age-appropriate learning materials in the home, and limited parent-child interaction. Each week, early literacy specialists, early learning specialists provide the family with high-quality book or an educational toy that's a gift to the family. It costs them nothing. Using the book or toy, the literacy specialist models reading, conversation, and play activities designed to stimulate the parent-child interaction, develop language and literacy skills, and build school readiness. Each year, each of the 15 families receive a minimum of 46 home visits. That's 690 visits and 180 books and 165 toys provided to Plymouth participants this school year. The home visiting staff, who through twice-weekly visits build strong relationships with participants, also connects families to a wide range of community resources through PFN, including food, housing, health, and educational services. As families complete the PCHP program, staff works with them to ensure their children are enrolled in high-quality, center-based preschool, pre-K, Head Start, or kindergarten as the critical next step. And we also do a summer reading program. At our free lunch program at the Hedge School, we go in each Thursday during the summer and do a storytime, a book giveaway, and a craft or game. And we have people that come in and entertain them. We have two entertainers coming this year, and that draws a big crowd in the summer.
Thanks, Judy. Now, we're going to have Kim. Kim's going to talk about the parent education aspects and the, our resource and referral.
So, listed here are our parent education programs offered this year outside of our regularly scheduled playgroups. We collaborate with area experts to facilitate these groups. We utilize Sue West, as we mentioned, parent educator from Beth Israel Deaconess for many of our classes, including infant massage, sleeping and feeding, parent power, and active parenting. We also utilize Marcia Richards. She's a nutritionist from Beth Israel Deaconess for our nutrition classes. Janine Fitzgerald, behavioral specialist, and Cindy Horgan, parent education expert. PFN really strives to build a presence in the community as the go-to place to find resources for anything from concrete support in times of need to food, mental health, education, and parent support. This year, the program facilitated more than 600 referrals to resources. Some of those were enhanced by providing transportation and case management to ensure that the referral was appropriate. So, a case study that I gave up here demonstrates how the resources and referrals benefit Plymouth families. PFN was contacted by WIC with a referral of a young woman and a 14-month-old child that were new to Plymouth and located here by what's called the STAP program, the Scattered Site Transitional Apartment Program. This program provides intense case management and traditional, transitional housing for families who are homeless due to domestic violence. Working with the WIC caseworker, we assessed the greatest needs of the family. The mother and child were in need of support, social interaction, transportation, and access to area resources. We utilized the PFN PTA to, to obtain a stroller and car seat for the family. Once equipped with a car seat, we arranged transportation free of charge for the family to attend PFM programming. The family enrolled in the five-month weekly playgroup for parent education, social interaction, and developmentally appropriate learning activities. We then referred the family to Head Start and the parent-child home program.
So, that's our presentation. Like I said, I really wanted to highlight the hard work of the staff. There are many more things that we do that are not in the presentation. We participate in lots of community councils, and are, and really strive to really find resources that are appropriate and to really make a safety net for families with young children, who can be very isolated in Plymouth, as I know that you all know. But, you know, we're the first step for them, and we, we really appreciate the community getting the word out to let people know, because, you know, it takes a lot to, to do outreach, get people to know that we're here, believe it or not. And when our state liaison comes out, she always comments about how much, how much we do for the amount of money that we get, because there are other programs like ours, obviously, in the state. And I always acknowledge that it's because of the community. It's the support of the community. It's the support of the, the school district by space and many other, you know, other things. So.
But it's mostly because of your dedication. It is.
Thank you.
You're, you're dedicated to this service, and it's very needed.
I can sort of speak to it, too. I, when I started my family, I lived in Plymouth, but I had a two-year-old and a, the newborn, and my two-year-old regressed with the potty training. And to this day, I speak of that service to a lot of friends who have kind of the frustrations, and that was a game changer. And I still think of the tips that I received as a, you know, newer mom from Plymouth Family Network, and the Raising a Reader I brought my kids into. And it really was, it was helpful. It was just really helpful as a new mom in the community to have that connection. So, you've done a really great job.
Mr. Bailey.
Good job. Really, really good presentation. Could I just ask, you have the survey, and I read through the survey, and the Raising a Reader is very interesting to me. It's very important to me. Do you have all the results? Maybe could we get like a full report of all the results, rather than just the one slide?
We don't have it for this school year yet. I have given it in the past for the, for the others, but yes. Obviously, what, what we have found in the past years is that the, the families that have the least education and the lowest income have the most significant changes in their Raising a Reader post-surveys. You know, even though we do touch a lot of families that are already reading, it's those families that are not thinking about that, don't have access to the books, that we make the biggest impact on. So, yes, we'll definitely get that for you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
My kids love the little bags. We'd then go to the library, and they'd fill their bags. And we still have, that was seven years ago, we still have the bags. Now, do you guys take donations for, you were mentioning the, the group where you visit the homes? You have 15 families. Is there need for donations? Because I don't know how you acquire...
All of, all of the toys and books are structured by age. It's a progress, progression of books. They all intertwine with each other. The book might have something to do with the toy before it. So...
There are actually curriculum that goes along with each thing that we bring in. But as far as donations, if we can't, if we can't store, which we really can't store a lot of actual physical gear, we find someplace, we kind of do what we can to get it out into the community. So.
Books in particular, because even if we don't use it in the program, if they're good quality books that aren't damaged, we can always give them through our summer reading programs, our giveaways.
Any other questions or, or comments? Thank you very much. That's a great, a great, great work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Trish. Now, Dr. Maestis, we have Student Services.
Yes, tonight, we have Dr. Halpin, who is here tonight to provide a report on our Student Support Services program for the district. I think, over the years, you've heard Dr. Halpin's name referenced many times regarding the different programs that we offer in the district, and his office is responsible for management of several programs, and he will review those programs here tonight. So, with that said, Dr. Halpin.
Thank you, Dr. Maestis, and all school members. It's great to see you tonight. So, you'll see in your, in your computerized folder that, that I do have a rather long presentation, and Dr. Campbell's laughing. I, I will try to move rather quickly through this. So, if I'm kind of skimming through slides, I'm hoping that you can kind of take a look at that, as well as the handouts that I provided for you. I'd definitely like to leave room for questions at the end. So, having said that, you know, the Student Support Services Department here at Plymouth Schools comprises the General Ed Support Students for Students, Supports for Students, excuse me. You can see from the first slide the areas that, that we do cover. I'm going to go into the, the School Counseling Program first, and just give you an idea of what we're trying to do there. All the standards that we have within the curriculum follow the Massachusetts standards, the ASCA, the national standards, as well as now the Plymouth Public School Strategic Plan. They all align, which is excellent. And I know the plan that we've had in, in the district. We're into our second plan now. It really hits on everything we're trying to do in the School Counseling Department. to do in the School Counseling Department. And you see the three domains there that we cover. We're, we're interested in having a proactive approach to counseling in our school, not a reactive approach. And obviously, equity of service is another piece that's very important to us. We have a curriculum that we follow. We update it every year. You can see on this slide what we're trying to do with students in grade six through twelve, mainly through the NAVYANCE program. And we're in our fourth year now with NAVYANCE, which is a college and career readiness platform. We, we also do classroom and individual trainings with kids through NAVYANCE, and we do student scheduling in classroom as well. So, we, we continue to have parent communication. It's important to us within the School Counseling Department. We follow up our meetings with students with individualized letters that go home to parents, either in backpack or in the mail. Sometimes now, it even goes right through NAVYANCE. You can see, too, that we are focused on parent education, the programs that we've held this year, fall, winter, and spring. This is a slide that we, we use to, to publicize the programs that we had this year. Just kind of moving along here. Staffing-wise, within the School Counseling Department, on this slide, just briefly looks at the different positions that we have within the School Department. I included the school psychologists within that slide. Even they don't, they don't fall under Student Support Services. They fall within the Special Education Department. I would just say as a brief comment on, on this that, you know, we're in pretty good shape with staffing, and, and I'm grateful to the district for the support that they give, that the mental health needs, social, emotional, educational needs of our kids. I would add, though, that, you know, the, the issues that the school counselors, school psychologists face, you know, and our administrators and teachers would speak to this, too, seem to be increasing in terms of mental health. And so, at any time, you know, we're, we're interested in, in looking at areas that we can either enhance or supple, supplement our services that we provide kids. And I'll, I'll get into that a little bit in some of the future slides here that I have, and ways that we're trying to do that as well. Certainly, at the lower levels, the elementary levels, if we could, if we could add in, in places strategically at the right time, we would always be interested in, in doing that. Some of the professional development that we centered on this year, you, you can see some of the topics that, that we've been looking at through the School Counseling Office. And I won't go through line by line on that, but we've, but we're, we had a good year with professional development, and, and we're looking to plan our, our, our planning for next year right now as well. So, this is, this is the piece that I wanted to focus on a little bit, so I'll spend a little bit of time with this. And this, one of the handouts, the Judge Baker report you have. If you're familiar with the grant that we, we had a few years ago with South Bay, we had a two-year grant that, that we, we worked on with them, where we were gonna introduce mental health services into our schools. That grant, we, we did for two years, and we're in the third year now. We were looking to support our schools and, and families and kids with increased services. You know, I, I think we, we've done a pretty good job of, of doing that. There, there are some, some challenges to it. I'll admit that, and I'll get into that a little bit. This next slide gives you a little bit of the data around the two years that we had with the grant. So, you can see that, you know, as we moved through those years, we, we, the, the number of students that, that the South Bay clinicians saw kind of plateaued out at around a hundred and eighty, which is, which is a good number. That's across not every school, but most of our elementary schools and, and the two middle schools as well. The issues that you see that are most prevalent in terms of treatment and focus were primarily anxiety and depression were the two biggies. Obviously, there were some other issues as well that came up in terms of diagnoses, but those are the two ones that were focused on the most. So, part of what the grant did is they provided us some data. And you can see that from the surveys that they did with the kids, as well as the parents, there, there was positive results in terms of outcomes and, and reduction in problems. The report goes into a little bit more detail on that. I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you look through that. And just as a quick update as to where we are this year without the grant, the numbers are similar. So, we have about a hundred and ninety students this year receiving services. The reason the numbers are so low at the high, so low at the high schools is because we only offer that after-school in a limited version, whereas in the middle schools and the elementary schools, clinicians are there during, during the school day and can access students. Switching gears a little bit, you know, my office works with attendance, and Mr. Amorall supervises our attendance. Each year, we, we talk about setting up goals for the year, the goals that we've established this year. Now, here on this slide, you can see that one of the goals that we really wanted to look at was trying to kind of integrate our referral service and make it easier for, for staff members. We, we've done that. We've, we've, we've created a Google folder where anyone, anyone in the district can basically make a referral to Mr. Amorall. And as you can see, we've had over a hundred and ten referrals this year. Half of them have been from the elementary schools, and then the breakdown is about twenty-five percent or so, middle and high school. A good percentage of them are from, for truancy, some of them for residency verification. Mr. Amorall's done a very good job of, of making sure that outcomes for residency verifications are met quickly. You can see some of the towns that we've had to deal with in terms of students living outside of Plymouth. Mr. Amorall's success is, is greater with the kids who are younger. We've seen that over time. As the kids approach ages fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, it gets, it gets more difficult, but he still does work very hard to, to try to help kids and families with those issues. I wanted to point out, too, that on this slide, this is data from the DESE, and I thought it was interesting that, you know, in the main areas of attendance that the DESE provides us with data on, we have shown pretty significant improvement in all those areas from two thousand and fourteen, fifteen to two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that I know exactly all the reasons behind that. I, I don't. I know that attendance is, is something that we're always focused on in the district and trying to make improvements in, in so many different ways that we, you know, that we try to do that all the time. But I, I thought this was an encouraging slide because I, I, we've looked at this data in the past and how it hasn't always been as encouraging as this. Okay, so homeless education, you, I've gone over in the past with you the different reasons for homelessness, and I, and I've listed them again here on the slide. I won't go into that so much right now, but I'll, I'll point out that, you know, homeless transportation costs have always been a concern for us in the district. And you can see here from this slide, the numbers going back to two thousand and eleven in terms of our students, as well as cost-share students that we have with other towns, and the transportation costs associated with them. We had a, a pretty steep increase in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen with homelessness. And, and I can talk about that a little bit. The law has changed recently, and, and, and my concern is that, when I get to the next slide, I'll explain it a little bit, that, that we may see that trend continue because actually, last year, the way the state had, had looked at homelessness, it helped us with our, with our reduction in the amount of time that we would have to allow kids to be transported. The, the law now, moving forward, really holds us accountable to, to make sure that we're transporting students who are homeless, even if they've secured permanent housing the entire school year. It also, it also makes sure that we're doing the same thing for foster care kids. The law has changed, but the implementation has not caught up with it quite yet. So, we're in a good place right now. I'm a little concerned next year and the year after what that's gonna look like for us. The state, the Department of Education, hasn't really given us a, a good direction on what we should do. So, in the meantime, what they've told us is just kind of follow the old rules that you used to follow, and that's what we're doing right now. I'm kind of waiting for a, a better update from them. I don't know what it's gonna look like for next year. That's why I put on that, that last point. I'm not sure how we're gonna be handling it next year, but I'm constantly trying to figure that out and, and tell, and, and get the, the real information from them on what we're supposed to do. In the meantime, we have a pretty good system in place, and we're doing our best to try to, well, you know, give the kids what they deserve in terms of transportation, educational services, and at the same time, watching out for, for the costs that we have that continue to escalate. English learner education, I, I threw on the slide the different acronyms that are important to know. I won't, I won't go through all of them. That would not be fair to you. The, the number of students receiving services in the district, so you can see the trend, that it's been an upward trend. We're at about eighty-five this year. And as far as staffing, you can see Marie, you know Maria De Silva. She's a department head at North. And, and Elisa Birick is a, is a ESL teacher itself. Kim Simonson's at Nathaniel Wharton. She's retiring this year, and I, I wanna thank her for her service. She's been a wonderful part of the Plymouth community, and we're gonna miss her. We have Nicole and Michelle at the other elementary schools. The numbers indicate the number of students that they have right now who are ESL students. And then you can see, too, that, that, you know, Portuguese is, is the main native language that we, we have in our district, but we certainly have a variety of other languages as well that's, that our kids speak. Some of the key pieces to what we're trying to do in, in English language education, we continue updating curriculum work, curriculum, excuse me. This year, we did the nine through twelve. When I say we, I would say Maria and her staff did that. A big piece to what we did this year was the, the coordinated, the CPR, the Coordinated Review, which is coming up for next year. And, and I wanna thank the, the English language teachers who helped me with that. We did submit all the documentation, and we're looking forward to that feedback next year. The retail endorsement, if you're familiar with the requirement that the state has, would they target, when, the target for, for Plymouth was thirty-nine teachers when this came out over a three-year period. We, we have surpassed that target. We have a hundred and eighty teachers who are endorsed in our district, which is wonderful. And we have twelve administrators who have the SEI endorsement. The tricky part's gonna be that all kids who, who have English as a second language, they're, they're all supposed to have, be taught by endorsed teachers, which is gonna be very hard for us to do, even though we have those kinds of numbers. Moving forward, we're gonna have to continue to come up with creative ways to get teachers endorsed moving forward. And we, we have provided courses onsite. We will continue to do that for teachers, and I will keep you posted as to how that's going. We were very fortunate this year through Title One to be able to hire a family engagement liaison who's helping us out now. She came on board about mid-year, and she's really assisting us with district transition and interpretation needs and providing help in the schools to families when they need that service. Our general ed tutoring, you're, you're familiar with this as well, I think. We, we have a number of students who, who are out of school for medical and other reasons, and that we, we do tutor them. We have students also who miss school because of, of discipline issues. And, and if they're out for long enough, we, we provide them with tutoring as well. So, I know this slide's a little tricky to see, but these next two slides just give you an idea of the numbers of kids that we have. So, you can see from January of, through two thousand and sixteen through January two thousand and seventeen, we had about a hundred and sixty-eight students, most of them in the secondary schools. The next slide is, the dates are a little different, but it's what I had for data, and I just want to show you that. This was July first, two thousand and sixteen through the beginning of May this year. It's about a hundred and nineteen students, okay? And we do provide them with the type of service that they need. It's a challenge. We're looking at more creative ways in the future to try to maybe bring more tutoring directly into the schools if possible, but we'll continue to work on that. Okay, shifting gears to home education plans. You're familiar with the school committee policy on, we're looking at for home education plans. We do have a process in place to make sure that we're collecting the plans, as well as the evaluations, on an annual basis. Some data around home education. We have a hundred and twenty-two plans this year that we've processed, and you can see the breakdown from elementary to middle to high school. After the age of sixteen, they're not obligated to provide a home ed plan. We do continue to try to, to encourage and, and track them down whenever possible. This is more historical data. If you're interested in knowing the numbers in terms of home ed plans, you know, we went back as far as two thousand and five. You know, we're on a little bit of an upswing right now with the hundred and twenty-two, but you can see that back in two thousand and six, seven, eight, we, we were around those numbers as well. So, we've always been between about eighty and one-twenty home ed plans. Some of the challenges that, that, that I think we face, and I, I modify these a little bit from year to year, but, you know, making sure that we're consistent from school to school and level to level, academic rigor for kids, and, you know, student support services. We think a lot of the, the kind of help we can get kids who, who are struggling, but it, we also wanna challenge kids and make sure that they're receiving all the challenges that they should have in, in their, in their public education experience. And then that last point is something that, you know, it just continues to be something that we're looking at, the increase in the psychosocial student and family issues that we see increasing from year to year. Some of the things that are happening that are new and exciting, we're exploring the possibility of a new schedule at the middle schools. We started that work this year with a joint committee, and we made some progress, but not enough to implement a new schedule for next year, but we're gonna reengage that group again next year and, and see what we can do hopefully for the following year. Some things that you're probably already familiar with, I know you get updates on PYDC. There is a, a, a small grant, the STEM Starter Academy Early College Pathway Grant that we're doing with four Cs, which will provide opportunities for some of our high schools' kids to get free college programming, online courses in mechanical design. That's gonna start this summer. So, it'll be a handful of kids, but we're, we're, we're trying to get the right kids. I mean, we have this program, so it's kind of hard to identify them, but we are, we're, we've got a few kids in each high school who'll probably be able to take advantage of this. And this'll happen right at the high schools remotely, online after school, so it's a great opportunity. Some of the other pieces, I know you're, you're familiar with all the, the different college and career readiness activities that, that we do. I'd add that we were able this year to create a, a Google form as well for the local scholarship, which I think helped kids, it made it easier for them. And I think it also helped some of the staff who have to process those requests as well. So, we're embracing Google continually, and that's another plus for us there. My, the last slide that I had, just, I wanna recognize some great things that are happening. You know, the AP honor roll that we achieved as a district in two thousand and fifteen and in two thousand and thirteen, and then updated numbers this year. Our, our participation rate in AP was, was phenomenal at South, and, and at North, it was excellent. And that data is, is very good to look at. And some people that I, that I wanna recognize, and I leave people out, but, you know, the Guidance Department heads, Emily Nugent and Shari Collett at, at North and at South, really do an excellent job managing the staff and, and implementing programs. Jen Faran and Jason Hall have helped with AP night and with really pushing NAVYANCE and, and being experts in, in, in the departments there. Lindsay Sabre's a guidance counselor at, at South High, and she's helped us organize the, the parent financial aid workshops. And just in general, the school counselors and the school psychologists who, you know, and I, I include teachers and administrators, who day to day, they're dealing with, with these issues that, that I've discussed a little bit tonight. And the, what, what I see of the district trying to do, which I'm, I'm impressed with, is there's, there's a level of, of wanting to provide support, service, and advocacy for kids, while at the same time, looking to hold people responsible and accountable. And I think that's a, that's a tough line to, to toe, and, and the district is trying to do that, and I respect that. And Maria De Silva, like I said, the, the ELE department was so helpful in, in getting things together this year for the CPR audit. Somebody you don't hear a lot about, but Christine Travassos is the high school MCAS math tutor. She's been in the district for a while, and she works really hard to help these kids pass the MCAS math test. And she's been doing it for, for years, and, and she deserves some credit for that, for sure. And then Sue Dreev is a secretary now who, who shares responsibility for, for both the Student Support Service Department, and she's doing educational technology. And, you know, we couldn't get things done in my department without her, too. So, that, that's, that's my list for this, for this year. I saw, I went kind of fast. I'm sorry. I, I know that probably was a good thing, too. So...
Uh-huh.
Certainly, questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Simon.
Just a quick question. With NAVYANCE and, you know, any surveys that we have, do we ever look or get any feedback as to how many students drop out the freshman year of college?
We have a lot, we have a, I have a lot of that data, yeah. I've shared it in past years, and I've, I've, I've shied away from it because I felt like it was a little bit of overkill. I'd be happy to share that with you through the, I can just share it out. It's easy enough to do.
How do we stand with that? Because I just...
We're, we're not, we're not, we're in, we're average in terms of, of post, partition, participation rates and retention rates in college. We're, we're right in the middle. It's an issue. It's, it's a problem, not only from freshman to sophomore year, from sophomore to junior year. And, and the, the rates are high. The persistence rates, kids don't continue to move on through college.
I know, and I've heard, I just, I've heard a lot of feedback about it this year, and I'm wondering if there's, I mean, it's definitely something that, that we should look at as to, you know, are these kids old enough? Are they prepared? Are they, you know what I mean? It's just kind of a lot, alarming to me.
We have the data. Digging deep and figuring out, you know, what's behind it is, is, is tough. It's tricky. You know, kids in college are exposed to a lot of different changes at that point in their life. They're going from a very sheltered life into, it's like, it's like this adulthood all of a sudden. And, and the freedom that they have to, to make decisions, in, in some cases, it almost turns on the blink of an eye. Not in all cases, but, and so I, I think there's a lot of potential there for kids to make, you know, choices that maybe aren't in their best interest. And, and so maybe they're heading in a direction that's not gonna be fruitful for them in their lives.
I mean, the stories I've heard have been all across the board, different, you know?
Dr. Campbell?
Dr. Campbell.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I think college persistence is always a challenge of ours and we're, we don't, we're not satisfied with getting them off to college, but we want to see them persist and actually obtain a degree of some sort. And I think it gets, you know, there are academic issues, we need to be mindful. Regardless of what the data says, we know we need to prepare them both academically and also the soft skills. Financially, setting them up for, so that they're not going to be strapped financially and just knowing the individual situations of those students and those families to make them make the best decisions. And then the social piece, as Dr. Halpin said, college is a very independent time where they have a lot of free time and we need to, well before they get to high school, help them with those social, emotional, behavioral, life skills and, and navigate those situations so when they go off to college, you know, they have goals in mind, they know what they want to do. They want to enjoy themselves, but they want to do it responsibly and make good decisions so they're going to persist. So if we're, if we're always focused on those areas, I think we're, we're going to see that continuously improves.
Those numbers change.
Ms. Badger.
I just have a couple things. So my, so it kind of goes, actually goes along with Dr. Campbell just said, the, getting them set up financially and getting them ready to go through college. And, you know, it's, it's a daunting amount when you look at that bill, you know, your daughter goes mass maritime. So you know, when you look at that bill and you're like, okay, how am I going to do this? And you go through freshman year and you get that paid for, but then it continues to accumulate. So have we considered doing any kind of, or have we tried doing any kind of younger grades on how to prepare for that, you know, your, your parents go to something in elementary school, maybe there's something in middle school. It's just, it's a huge topic. It's a hu, it's a really kind of.
Well, you know, we, we've, we've talked about this in the past. We've done, we've done early college planning, financial planning nights and, and it's, we haven't got the great response on it, you know. It's, it, the parents seem to come out when it's, it's time, which is later on, you know. Well, yeah, when they think it's time, you know. And, and, and the advice is that, you know, when you have children, it begins to start saving when they're young. And that, that's the, you know, and what you're saying is, is to get them, get that word out to them, you know. And I agree with you, I do. And I think there's, there's things that happen in the community that, in the library that, and I, I don't know if people are going to those kinds of things, you know. I mean, from the, from my perspective in, in terms of working with kids, you know, we, we try to make sure that the kids are going to apply to a range of colleges, you know, not just academic, but also financial safety schools as well. And I, and I also know that sometimes a financial safety school isn't truly a safe, you know, it's still expensive or it's still going to create a financial burden on the family.
Is that a discussion that's had, like?
It's a discussion that's, it's, it's a school counselor discussion that happens and it happens with the, with the kids in the office and that, that kind of thing. And certainly when, when, when it's brought up with parents, you know. But a lot of those issues are, are things that have to, conversations that have to happen, you know, between students and, and their mothers and fathers and their parents and guardians. And, and those, those conversations we want to encourage because the earlier they can happen, everyone's going to be more on the same, more likely to be on the same page in, in that regard. But, but I, I recognize the challenge for sure.
And then my, my next question is, and I'm sure you've probably already done this, but have we, we're in an area where there are so many colleges locally for the tutoring pool? Do we reach out to those area schools and try to get?
Well, it's a good idea. We haven't really reached out to colleges for, for tutoring assistance, but that would be something to consider if we had professors who were, who were willing to do that and work, you know, with our kids.
I mean, we do, I mean, we Bridgewater, we have student two, you know.
Yeah. And we have a lot of involvement with the locals, colleges, but not, not in that, not in that regard, but that's something to, to certainly consider, yeah.
Mr. Begley.
Good presentation, Sean.
Thank you.
Some questions though. Going back to the attendance indicators.
Yeah.
So I know all the numbers are improved, that's the good news, but they still have some room to go. And I just want to make sure I'm understand, I'm interpreting your numbers correctly. So absent 10 or more days, that's 29% of all absences are 10 or more days.
That's the.
And then of that number, 18%, so 18% of the 29% are unexcused absences on those 10-plus days.
Right. And that's why, thank you Nancy for going back to that slide if you can. That's why on the, on the, on that particular data point, I asterisked it with, with an explanation as to, as to how that data is, is computed.
Yep.
And it's, it's not, you're right, it's not a great data point for us because when you compare it to the state numbers, we're, we're high, we're high. My concern about that number, and I, I can't speak to it as an expert as much as I'd like to, but I, I have a feeling that it's probably connected to how the data is reported out. Dr. Campbell and I looked at this the other day a little bit and, and I, I don't know that all school districts are consistent in how they report this data out. That's the easiest way to put it. And I think that in Plymouth, we are very careful to make sure that the data is as, as pure as possible. And it, and it might in this case penalize us a little bit in terms of when we look at the data and it's going to raise concerns. It is the area that's the toughest. The, the, the kids who miss a lot of time and miss it, you know, consistently like that. So we're concerned about it. I'm sorry, my, my answer's not as, as, as pinpoint as I'd like it to be for you, but I think it does have to do with data reporting as part of.
Well, the part where it's the comparison to the state is interesting.
Yeah.
But my, my bigger thing is that 18% of the 29%, so 29% of all absences are for 10 or more days and then 18% of that is unexcused absences. It seems like a really, forget about the state numbers, it's high in relation to the state, but like you say, there could be, you know, pre-medica, mediating situation there. I don't know. Statistically, it could be just.
It's, it's a concern.
But, but within itself, within the district itself, it seems like a really high number. So do we have a cultural problem? Are we not getting the word out that, what is the situation? And I know, I know over the years, we've talked about this a lot. Also with Kathy, we've had the same discussion at the school councils with Kathy and everything. They're always trying to find the silver bullet. But I'm just wondering, have we, have we found anything? What, what is the anecdotal explanation of why?
Well, anecdotally, I'd say this is a concern and it has been all along. So that's, I, I don't know how else to put it besides, like, we've got, we've got a, you know, an issue, a problem. I mean, I, I wanted to paint the picture that in general, our attendance has improved, which was, which, which is great. And the fact that you saw, I'm glad that you saw this.
But the problem is there's a perception, perception among parents or a large number of parents statistically that don't view it as a serious concern. That the child can miss that much time and it's not a concern because it's repeating over and over year, over year.
You know, I think what we would need to do to get, to get a better answer to this question is to, is to really, to look at the data and see who, see who it is and what, where this is happening.
Right.
You know, my, my concern would be that, I don't, I don't want to, I haven't looked at it that closely and I probably should, but maybe we're looking at kids that, that some of the younger kids who miss time and the, the excused and unexcused becomes more of a, of a sticking point or, or significance in, in high school when credit becomes attached to it.
Right.
You know, there could be things like that that we're seeing. And I, and I do know that there are kids who, who miss a considerable amount of time and we're really spending a lot of time on those, on those families to try to help them.
Statistically, have we looked at it to see where most of the unexcused absences, are they forming around certain times of the year? Like are they around the winter breaks and the?
I think there are probably patterns to that, yeah.
Extended vacations or something? I mean statistically?
Well, I'll, I'll just give you an example. Last week I was looking for a kid in Aspen. A parent called and left a name, but I needed to track it down. He, he wasn't in school that day and I wanted to just take a look at one of our schools to see if I could find this kid because all I had was a first name of the child. Parent really didn't leave a lot of information. So I go into the school and I start looking for who was absent that day. And I started looking at the reasons why kids were out. Out of 15 kids, four of them were at Disney.
Yeah.
Okay. And this is elementary. So just so everyone understands, the state rate, the state guideline and the state mandate is 10% of the school year, a student should fail because they're, they can, they're allowed to miss 18 days. It's 10% of the school year. The biggest dilemma that we have in this district and in many districts across this, across the Commonwealth, across the country, is there's an attitude that attendance is not all that important, especially in the elementary. We're elementary, they're in elementary, how, how bad can it, how bad can it be? The biggest dilemma that you have is when a child is out of school, the request is, can you provide the makeup work? Can you, can you get more work while they're out of school? And the problem is, is it becomes even more of a burdensome, burdensome situation because now the teachers have to compile the information and get that information out to families so they can try to get that made up. But the fact of the matter is, is those days are not excused days, they're unexcused days. And the, and the vacation, a lot of times is not a five-day vacation, it's, it's a 10-day vacation.
Sometimes they go in shifts.
So it's, and, and it's not only that, it's, it's, there are multiple situations. So to, you know, Mr. Begley's point, I think the classification of, of when they are and what those opportunities are, there's a lot of absenteeism when you take, we, we have, I get a report every day. If, anytime we have a 10% threshold of absenteeism, I get a report. And you, you start to see the trends for illness when we have a, a flu outbreak or a, or a bad virus outbreak. I, I get a, I, I just know where it's happening and what schools because I get the report. But it's interesting, to, to the point that was made earlier, is there a trend or a time? It's all year long. It's not necessarily extended breaks, extended vacations. Yeah, the, the, the Friday before, you know, you know, like, let's say we're off on, on Thursday for, for Thanksgiving and that Wednesday, the attendance is not good.
Right.
And, and even before the holiday breaks, the attendance is not good. So I don't know the answer because our principals work on this constantly, especially at high school. Dr. Halpin said it is a significant factor because credit is attached. So the, the amount of students that have seven and eight days on a semester is pretty high. The ones that bubble to the top are the ones that are nine and above. And I was just reviewing with Ms., with Principal McSweeney, her goals for the year. And one of the goals I met today to review her progress on them was the attendance. You know, over a five-year period of time, she's increased or decreased absenteeism by 16%, but it's still high. So when you take a look at that, that picking away at that, I know parents get extremely annoyed when the school calls and says your child's absent today, but that's, it's, it's a major work in progress for the district and, and it's a struggle for us.
Yeah, and I just would add one more piece that in, in discussions with administrators, assistant principals, school councils, there's a lot of work done. The kids who miss a lot of school, the staff knows who they are. And, and there's, there's a lot of, a level of, a layer of support and outreach that continues to occur that, that I'm, that I'm confident that, that there's, the effort is there. And I just want you to be aware that that, that does happen and that's important to note.
Mr. Begley.
Yeah, I, I was just looking to see if we could get some sort of pattern so that we know that there's, there's like sweet spots on the calendar where the abuse is more than other times, just so for the purposes of communicating it out, blanket communications, reminding everybody, we know it's that time of year, statistically, this is when, something where we can get it out in front of people, just say, hey, we're watching. And, and we, we know you're, you're doing it, you might be thinking about it. There might be a deterrent factor in there to, you know, you pick up 1%, 2%, you pick up something. Because I know that Kathy's concern was she did take a big drop and now she's leveled off.
Ms. Frye.
Yeah, I think if we ever solve it, we could sell it to every school in the state. I've spent hours trying to solve it and I think the tricky part is, in my opinion, at the high school level, I can't speak to the younger grades, the excused and unexcused is a great thing because it, it has opportunities, college visits. It gives us some leeway with kids who are helping raise their younger siblings and they have no transportation or no childcare. So we have that window, but the, the bad part of the unexcused is that the kids do view it that they have nine unexcused days, almost, they, they have a tally. So almost like it's their vacation time. Mrs. Frye, I have three more days, don't worry about it. And I said, if you tell me not to worry about it one more time. We, Sean's right, we, I would call a young lady last year every single morning at 6:00 a.m. We, all the schools do this and, but it is a, the value of it, but also that lingo and how we identify. It's something that we, we've had committees, we've worked on it, but it's almost like the value on attendance as a family structure, but then the understanding by the kids of senior skip day is not a school holiday. These are the dialogues we have when, oh, I have two days left, then they get the stomach bug. Well, I said, well, why did you take the other seven days off? You know, so it's, it's a real moving target. But it's, but I think you would find it is the entire year, you definitely get the vacations. That we kind of just know is going to happen, but it's more the other, the other times. And we try to say it's a quality for life and, but it, blood, sweat and tears. And, but the kids, there's a direct correlation to all of the data Sean shared. If you are in school, less issues happen, if that makes sense. But it's complex.
And the continued focus on attendance is a good, is a good thing for us to do as these kids move along to, to college and work and, and these expectations. I think we just need to stay steady with it and your suggestion's a good one if we could try something like that.
Is there anything else? So, and then in the report itself, there was a lot of other statistics that I just wanted to make sure. On the clinic site engagement slide, so that would be like, I have this so blown up that I can't see what the page, page five, five of seven.
Is it Judge Baker's report?
It's the graph.
Oh, the report itself?
Yeah.
Oh, in the report itself, yes, in the report. The, the, these numbers weren't in the actual PowerPoint. They weren't? No, only one chart was.
The, the report is, is a handout, it's an attachment, but I have it here, I can look at it.
Okay. So what I was interested in is for some of the schools, there's huge swings.
Oh, yeah.
On the number of clinic site engagement. But the, the one that was, jumps off the page at you is Indian Brook is way above everybody else. In fact, it goes from zero on August 15th all the way up to 180 by September 15th. So in one month, it saw an entire jump, which that you would think, well, that's, that's an aberration, that's unusual. Except when you look at July 15th, it dropped all the way down to nothing from way up there and then it dropped all the way down by December 15th, all the way down to zero again. I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this right.
You, you, I'm sure you are interpreting it correctly, yes. I, I can try to explain that. I think, you know, it probably goes to, to the issue that we've had in terms of stability with clinicians. The, 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 the lull in the summer is because it was the summer. But, but we, but we've, we've had an issue around stability of clinicians. And when, when there's a drop off in, in service, it's, it's in all likelihood the, the loss of a clinician or the, or the transition to a different clinician in the setting. So that, that in all likelihood would, would explain.
Do they continue to see, get support during the summer because the other schools don't drop off during the fall?
Well, and, and that's what I'm saying, it was probably unique to that school where the support wasn't, wasn't continual during the summer. And that would explain the drop off in those numbers like that.
And then at December, it drops all the way down consistently, shoots all the way up and then drops consistently down to where it's off the chart at December.
And towards the end, there might, it might be missing data, I don't know, but the summer, I definitely would say that that was because the, the service wasn't provided. The intention is that the service continues through the summer. That's the intention.
Right.
But it, it definitely, it, it either subsides or sometimes it just stops depending on the family situation. But the intention is that, that it will continue even on a reduced rate during the summertime.
Dr. Miestis.
I think it's a really good pickup, Mr. Begley, regarding the data and, and the consistency of services because it's one of the things that we, we just met on it last week to discuss, how do we as a district invite some of these outside services to be part of our model? Because it's a great model. The problem that we have is a lot of the clinicians transition from one organization
to another, and yet that leaves us with a gap. So I think our goal is to try to.
Balance that out.
So we're looking at options, so that we can try to flatten that continuum of service. And that is something that we're working on, and, but it is a really difficult situation, where you get a, a very qualified, well-adjusted situation with the clinician, and they get a job in another organization. And then it takes a while to go and hire and bring somebody back in, build the relationship, so that you can then have that service. So it is something that we've, we've, we're aware of.
The biggest challenge we face is, we, we don't have oversight of these clinicians, but we have to, we have to have a level of it, even though they're not our employees. And so inconsistency and, and turnover is, is the biggest challenge that we face. But we've also been, we, we, it's been a gift in a lot of ways to us, because we've had some, some really skilled people at certain schools, who've been consistent and provided a level of service that, I mean, we've got, you know, someone who coaches and is really involved, and, and we, so there's, there's the pros and the cons, but we are talking to other organizations to try to expand this bit.
Dr. Campbell.
Just, sorry, just to piggyback on that, even though we don't supervise, Dr. Halpin is very adamant about having regularly scheduled meetings with the, with the service providers and the building principals, to make sure that we're on top of any issues, or, you know, reaching back to, to this organization for, to, to assess the supports.
Mr. Begley, back to you.
Yeah, I was just pointing out that I mentioned the Indian Brook, obviously, what we were just talking about, but then if you look for the other extreme, the PCIS, is almost, you can barely see it, because it's on, flat along the bottom line, like they have almost no clinic.
Yeah, and I, honestly, I can't even give you an explanation for that. This, this isn't, you know, I mean, I provided the report, I, there's, there's no way that PCIS had that flat line of, of services. So there's some, there's something, there's something wrong with that data, but I can't, I can't provide an explanation to it. They had a high level of, of, of service throughout the two years of the grant, they did, so, but, but thank you for noticing that, I appreciate it.
A lot of information, a lot. Any other committee members with points, questions? Okay.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Mestes?
I am good.
Homeschool. With the worst questions.
Right now, we have, let's see.
Student handbook.
Oh, student handbook. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. I was joking with Dr. Halpin earlier about having 300 slides, but it's really important information, so I want to thank him as well. So tonight, we have the proposed handbook revisions for your consideration. We meet by committee, elementary, middle, and high school administrative team from central offices as well, to review the handbook, look for any recommendations, and bring them before you today. So your attachments include a summary chart of the revisions, which I will refer to, as well as the main section and the various appendices for the, the various schools. The overall recommendations this year are not very substantial. We, we look at this, this handbook has come a long way over the course of the year, certainly before I came on board nine years ago, and we continue to refine that, so we think we feel really good about these recommendations. So I'll start with the elementary appendix, so referring to the summary of handbook revisions. So in the elementary section, it includes a reference to Plymouth South Middle School, grade five, and as you are aware, we're going to be moving South Middle Schools, grade five, to South Elementary School. So we've taken all references to grade five at South Middle out of the handbook. Early dismissal days, changed that to K to five. It was referenced a half-day before in kindergarten, there's no longer a need to do that, so we're changing that as well. On page A2, under the K to two section, we changed the language from parents have a formal opportunity to meet with teachers during the months of December and March. Written report cards are issued in January, and again in June for kindergarten, and in November, March and June for grades one to two. So we, we, we added language regarding the report cards there, and were more specific. The same for grades three to five, which have a different reporting period, so we've specified that language within the handbook. As well as there was a need to change the assessment and report card references for the behavioral attributes, for work habits, to improvement needed, satisfactory, and outstanding, so that changed a short while ago, and that's reflective in the report cards, so it matches what the report card says. We've also changed the word lavatories to restrooms within the handbook, there was a reference to that. And then on page A5, appendix A5, we changed from, in terms of responsibilities, imperants and guardians, we changed that from sign and return the slips found on the last page of the handbook, to sign and return the handbook signature pages. As you're aware, at the elementary level, we do, we used to provide a hard copy to every parent. We still do that if they request that, but it's electronic, and they do get the signature page, so we, we changed that verbiage to reflect our practices.
Okay, let's see, committee members with questions about the elementary school appendix A. Ms. Badger.
I just have one little edit for it. Not too much a question, and I have to apologize, I'm going to be a little all over the place in my edits, because for some reason, all my notes didn't save in electronic support. This one is just, it literally looks like you have two sentences, but you just haven't, you didn't put a period in A2, with the parents have a formal opportunity to meet with teachers during the months of December and March, period, written report cards are issued in January, and again in June for kindergarten.
In the handbook itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just need a period for there.
Sure. And one thing I want to point out, that, that the formatting will look different once it's published. So this was done through a Google Doc.
I just wanted to make sure you had a period.
Yep.
And it's in both sections where it says it.
Excellent.
That's it.
It's interesting, and the printout that I have, it's period showed up.
I see them right now, too.
We'll check to make sure that the final copy has it, that's fine.
I see them on. It's weird.
Anything else under appendix A? Okay, moving on to middle school appendix B.
Thank you. So in the middle school section, actually, fewer revisions there. Grade five academic expectations have been struck from all references. Again, we don't have grade five at the middle school, so we've taken that out. And also the explanation of behavioral consequences, the progressive discipline, there's a, there's a reference to Mass General Law 37H, H and a half and three quarters regarding exclusion and expulsion. So we wanted to reference that. It is in the handbook, but we just noted it within that particular section as well, to just be extra clear on that.
Okay, middle school appendix B.
Through the chair, I have a question there on that one. We skipped over academics expectations. We eliminated the whole chart, it looks like?
Anything referenced to grade five?
Grade five.
Ah, I got you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm looking at the whole thing, I missed the one line, grade five.
So, and I also point out, in the other attachments, if it's highlighted and struck, it will be struck. If it's highlighted and it's not struck out, it's because we're adding it.
Thank you.
Similar to our policy revision. Yeah, but you're correct, we're going to be getting into the grade five reference.
Ready to move to high school, appendix C? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. On page C6, graduation promotion requirements. We've added language here, and this happened, this comes up, and this is something that is done through the IP process from time to time, and very rarely, we're talking about unique circumstances. But we've added language that speaks, reads, "Specific course requirements may be waived as a component of a student's individualized education program or by high school principal based on individual program circumstances. Subject area requirements may not be waived." So there are occasions where that is taken into consideration, we wanted to be very specific under there. In C7, in terms of graduation dress, we've deleted the reference. It does talk about appropriate attire, but we were very mindful of our transgender population of students, and we wanted to be sensitive to that in this area. So you notice that we've gotten rid of male student and female student attire, and just kept the language more specific to appropriate dress and, and formal wear. So that was something that we've revised there. In sections C9 to 10, regarding tardies and dismissals, the, the old schedule, if you were five minutes late, you were considered, you were considered absent. And we've changed that policy, because our, our schedule has changed. So the, our classes are twice as long, we had some discussion about how much time that should be. So the collective agreement was to recommend that changing the five-minute leave policy to 10 minutes, and actually having it being 15 minutes for the first period. The next section has to do with class rank. In this section, we were just specific, adding language to what class rank is based on and what it is not based on, in terms of the weighted four-level grade point system, Mass Board of Higher Education, and mission standards that are used, and we referenced that chart, as well as the content area courses and the select, elective courses that are taken into consideration for GPA. So we just added some specificity there to clarify that for, for anyone. In terms of National Honor Society, in section C12, when it comes to potentially being taken off of National Honor Society status due to an incident perhaps, we added language within the timeline of due process, to just be clear on that, that there is due process to that. So we referenced that upon recommendation of the high schools. Tobacco use, under the, that section, we've added in-school suspension and extended detentions to the first offense column, because there was no reference of that. We've also, in all sections where it referenced parents, have changed it to parent or slash guardian, to be mindful of our families' situations. In the parking section, C13, we've added, "Students must observe all posted traffic regulations. School rules apply to all approved off-site parking lots." Because we do have some parking off-site at one of our campuses currently. In terms of dance activities guidelines, we've added that tickets to high school dances will not be sold at the door or after pre-established ticket sales deadlines, to avoid any confusion that may exist at high schools. And again, as I referenced before, in, in the other section, under the behavioral consequence section, we do reference Mass General Law 37H, H and a half and three quarters, when it comes to exclusion and expulsion, and we just reference Mass General Law there as well.
Okay, high school appendix, committee members. Ms. Badger.
Is, is there a reason that we have the reference to 2017 in their credits? I just noticed in the page C6, it has class of 2017 in their credits. I don't know if we need to keep that, or we just need it as a reference point?
C6, I'm sorry, I'm just opening that up.
Yeah, no, take your time. I mean, it's not a big deal. Just extra.
C6. Oh, class of 2017.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes.
So, okay. And then my other thing is, so in the reference to the graduation dress, so we've got jeans, no flip-flops, sneakers, all of that are considered unacceptable. I think that it's a, it's a hard thing, is it something that we're actually going to enforce? Is it something that we, because I know some of the kids had those dress shorts on, and, you know, what is that definition? You know, kids now wear bow ties with their shorts, and that's their, you know, cape cod formal sometimes in the summer. So that's where I thought, I just had a confusion with the shorts.
Well, I can tell you a little bit about, I track the history of graduation dress. We put this in, in the handbook and in the policy probably 15 years ago, because dress was very poor at the time, and we enforced it at the time. Like, we can't do this anymore, because this is 2017, but we enforced it by making children change their clothes. And we, and they should be dressed appropriately at graduation. This was back in the Plymouth Carver days. It has evolved away from that. And Ms. Frye, maybe you want to comment on that?
We actually, we work to enforce it as much as possible. Both schools share it with the kids. There's so many dynamics now, as Dr. Sorenson said, with financial issues and things like that, but we truly check the kids before they walk into the, the memorial hall or onto the field. And each school has a, Ms. Ivins, the summer, the South High professional at it. And we work through it, but we, some of the families really are excited that we enforce it, because they want their child to do that, and if we say it, they will do it. But if their parent says it, they may not, so, but we have, once the child's there, it's very, we don't really send them off to change. But Dr. Campbell's right, there's been lots of great work by the buildings with the transgender population at both schools, and a lot of creative solutions as well there. So I think the move is great, so, if that answers, it's a little gray, but being very gray tonight.
In that section, too, with graduation attire, I mean, going back on what I had discussed when we first started with the military sashes, could, can you frame up some language where that is appropriate, so it's not a yes or no by the staff? Like, yes, you can wear them, or no, you can? Can we have language in it that makes it acceptable?
Yeah, I think it, you know, my, again, I'm, I'm not on the handbook committee anymore, but my, I miss it. My recommendation would be to work with the schools and put it in their senior newsletter, because there were all, the military sashes are, it was a very, obviously, difficult situation that happened. There's all different types of sashes, so I think military is approved, obviously, Skills USA is approved, there's, there's different layers to it, and I think.
Right, but the specifics that they give them when they enlist, they, they're not, they cannot wear, they can't wear any military attire.
They're all, all the military would be approved, but I think if we put the language in the senior parent communication with the kids, that these are approved, this is what's approved, and this is what isn't, because there's a couple of things that have come up over the years that have been a little intricate, that I could share with you after the meeting, that, but we do approve the military. Usually, I don't know what the loophole was there, so I think in that communication, rather than the handbook policy, because.
But somewhere it was open for interpretation, that it wasn't open.
I understand that, yeah.
Mrs. Hunt.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
My understanding, too, and I, I think I heard this from a, a staff member, was that skills wasn't allowed at North, but was at South.
Yeah, I think, just looking from the outside in now, seeing most schools, I think maybe some communication and get both the principals together to talk about it, because I know there's some good reasons behind a lot of it. The military's an obvious approval, but there are some that have come up over the years that have been very sticky and not the form for it, that I could explain a little bit later. But I think we could easily come up with a list, I'd be willing to work with the high school principals.
We certainly would meet with both high schools and, and be very clear on what is and should be approved, as well as the Skills USA and DECA, and those things that we saw at graduation. And just make sure that.
I mean, not just honor, DECA, but, you know, again, a military commitment is.
Yeah.
Absolutely should be.
And they get the sashes when they enlist upon graduation.
We recognize them, we, we recognize them at class day, we recognize them and, and thank them for their service, and there's no reason they shouldn't be recognized when they're going onstage with their, with their graduation garb on, absolutely.
Okay, getting back to, to anything else on dress code, or anything else under appendix C?
Yes, I have a question. On the faculty selection committee performs the following functions, the bullet number three, so this was on page 12 of 27, so C12.
C12, okay, I'll open up to that, okay.
And bullet three, where you just put the tag on the end within the timeline of due process. First, could you just explain, what was the situ, what's the thing we're trying to fix here? Where was, was the process not being adhered to? Where, was there, was there a long time delay, and people were getting hung up on getting a hearing, or what's the?
No, I think that the, the language supports the opportunity, which we are very, very cognizant about, where if a student has a disciplinary issue, due process has to take place. And in some cases, it may take some time to get all things in, in a row. So no decision will be made, whether a student is removed, or, or they, or they remain on National Honor Society until due process has a chance to work its way through. And sometimes there are appeals that, that take place, there are a number of things that happen. So I think that's really the purpose of adding that language.
And where do we outline what the timeline of due process is?
It's not, I can say it's not specific in the handbook, that would be something that would be coming.
I didn't think so. I didn't remember, ever seen it.
Mrs. Frye.
You can speak to an example.
I think the, the key is that the timelines of due process is really that the child gets the opportunity for the due process, that if an incident happened in September, but then it was discovered in January, that we need to do our due diligence as a school to work with the child, based on, you know, hearing about things later and things of that nature. But, and the timelines, the biggest piece with the timelines, there's no specific timeline with due process, but it's that there's the opportunity to give your side of the story. And I think there've been, there have been a few cases where that wasn't a part of it, and a decision was made without the full due process necessarily. And that's the important part, and the, the parent should have a role in that, the child, and then a decision comes forward.
That was the part that was missing. So there have been cases in the past where there was a decision made without.
Correct, yes.
And that's what we're trying to fix here.
And I think the schools.
So just reminding everybody that they're entitled to a due process.
Correct. And the schools have done a great job with the, the National Honor Society advisors have been great in that they've made quarterly meetings, so that before, it used, something used, we have a meeting just when an issue arose, so now the quarterly review happens, and the dates are set in advance, and it's come a long way. National Honor Society's an ongoing.
Then, thank you. Then on C13, just, so I understand why we're, we're saying no sales at the door?
Yep. We have, we've never allowed sales at the door at either high school, I mean, in years, for safety, to be honest. And, you know, facility issues, I dealt with a lot, in space and things like that. And overall, safety with kids just showing up and being a guest, so we actually have never allowed it, but it's never been in writing. So I don't know why, it's a great thing that it came up, I wasn't at the meeting, but we did have a situation at South a year ago, where we, we made all calls and announcements, but a, a mom still was concerned. So I think it's great to put it in writing, because it just helps. But we've, we haven't had open access at dances in years, and the kids know that, but it kind of tightens it up.
Good, I was just afraid I was missing the backstory.
No, the prom, we have to tell them three weeks before the numbers, the, in-house, the homecomings.
Plenty of time and plenty of opportunity to purchase those tickets.
Yeah, and a lot, and sometimes when a child comes forward the day before the prom to buy a ticket, we can't get them. to buy a ticket, we can't get them a seat based on the venue, so there's that piece too. I just love high school discipline, so fun.
She misses that too.
Any other? I have one on the IEP reg, change.
Yes.
It's not new that a student's IEP could adjust their graduation requirements. This is not a new phenomenon.
Correct.
What have we been doing in the past? We haven't had this language in the past.
That's correct, and we, and there have been, there have been exceptions because that's, that's always been, you know, that's always been the practice.
So this is like the ticket sales at the door?
We're just being very...
The practice we're putting in writing?
Yep. But that, you're absolutely correct, this is not new.
Okay. Okay, and the last part of this is the preschool appendix D.
Thank you, I just opened that tab again.
Oh, no, there's two more parts.
Opened so many tabs now, I can't find that tab. One second.
No, me too.
The preschool, excuse me, the preschool section, there was only one addition, and that has to do with the parent drop-off. We've added a section to inform parents of drop-off and parking limitations, and you'll notice in that section, there was a map that was added to specify the traffic patterns in parking.
Any question about that one?
No.
Okay, now to the main, the main section.
Sure. In the main section, there are many references to our non-discrimination statement, as you're all aware, through our policy subcommittee revisions to non-discrimination, we went before you, a couple of meetings back, and had some recommendations there. Those recommendations have been updated throughout the handbook to include that based on things such as genetic information ancestry status as a veteran or military member. Things that weren't included before are now referenced in that, in that statement. Excuse me. In terms of field trips, on page 15, we've added that students attending overnight field trips are subject to search of baggage and personal belongings for, for reasons, I think, make sense. In terms of Google Apps for education acknowledgement, we've changed that language from, in Plymouth Public Schools, Google Apps, Google Apps is available, because it's a thing, for students in grades two through 12 to kindergarten through 12, because we've expanded our use of Google for education. Policies, laws, regulations, audio and video surveillance in school buses, the new policy in its entirety, which we went over a couple of meetings back, has also been included in the handbook.
Okay, any questions about this area? Ms. Badger?
So I know I brought this up in new business last week, and I know it's been or lost meeting, and I know it's been addressed at the school level, but the dress code on page 14, I think it's, I don't know what the solution is, and I don't know if it's a conversation, if it's a long-term kind of thing that we try to, try to figure out. I think it's well-written here in some respect. So the biggest problem, I'm trying to get it out, so it focuses, the way it's perceived by the students is it's being focused on the females. It's not, there's not, and I, they have, females have more restrictions on their clothing choice than our male students, just by obvious trends and that deal. But, and I think that's really bothering a lot of parents because students are measuring themselves and, you know, measuring is never good, no matter whether it's, am I gonna, is this going to be the appropriate clothing for me? I think it's bringing up a little bit more sexualization of the children than they need to be, and it's not in here measured, but I don't know if it's, there's the three-finger rule and kids are measuring their three fingers for their straps, you know, all of that. So it's not in here, but I don't know where it says principals designation or discretion, what the best thing is to do here. The other piece of this also is gym clothes. Gym clothes are almost impossible for young girls to find that are, that are long enough for them to wear, you know, that, that are deemed by the principal's discretion or by the headmaster, whoever it is. So I don't know if there's a way that we can do something a little bit different for gym, I mean, it's been a big deal.
I have two girl, I don't, I personally haven't had that problem having two girls, but, I'm sorry?
Yeah, gym's easy. Phys ed classes is easier.
So maybe it is at the high school level or a different school, but the school that this parent is talking about is it's very, as soon as the, the girls and boys had gym together, it was an issue, and the gym teachers made it an issue.
Yeah.
So they're wearing sweats and it's like 70 degrees out, yeah.
I think it's worth a conversation with the, with the buildings, the administration for the issues that we had a conversation about at the last meeting, obviously.
Yeah.
Certain things should not be happening if people are being questioned in front of their peers for things that they perhaps perceive as inappropriate, according to our handbook, but we can also have conversations with, you know, specific to gym class and see what the issues have been. I mean, Mrs. Frye can speak as a high school principal.
The language in here isn't the problem, it's the principal's discretion that seems to be the issue.
The hard part is, I mean, to be frank, is it, is the enforcement of it? It's very, very difficult. It's why public schools have gone to school uniforms where they, not a, you know, with golf shirts and khaki shorts, and it's very tricky. It depends on the child, the physique, the, the three-finger rule wasn't a big deal for us, it was more exposure. I think middle school's a whole nother dynamic, they're going through all these changes. But I think it'd be worth, I think the, all the administrators are very open to ideas and solutions because it's a constant discussion in our network of school administrators. The hard part is coming up with the solutions. The thing like hats and bandanas, that's easy. But it might be something we can talk about with our administrators at a retreat, and yeah, some retreat and look to next year. I think to change a policy would be, you wouldn't want to do, but it's, the enforcement is the hard part.
It's just the how it's perceived and interpreted by others.
Yes, yes.
Dr. Miasis, just to add one piece, my middle school principal days, these are painful moments, because I can tell you, kids leave the house looking one way and get to school looking another way.
Yes.
And it is, it is a lot of, it really puts the administration and staff into a really difficult position where there's a great deal of interpretation of what's acceptable and what isn't. It is remarkable how clothing trends really drive a period of time.
Yeah.
So for a while, there were, we were safe in that, in that interaction and that censorship in a sense, but it is, today, we are in a time where less is more, and I think it's becoming a significant challenge for the staff that have to try to make that interpretation. So there isn't a uniform way. When I took PE, we had a shirt that we could wear and a pair of shorts that we all had to wear, and that's what you got. And it's changed dramatically from that, and fashion now has taken over, and I think that adds a dilemma.
And I don't think that it's heavily weighted on female attire. I think you're referring to some of the female attire, but it wasn't too many years ago that boys were wearing their boxer shorts practically on the outside of their regular pants, and administrators were constantly telling them to pull up their pants. So it just, it just happens to be the trend of the time.
Oh, no, I know that.
Any other questions about, about these revisions? This is an action item? So I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, it's not, it's not listed as an action item, but it should be.
I think it was.
I don't have it.
It comes up on my screen as an action.
Yeah, it's not on my control panel as...
Oh. So that means we can't vote? Because you have control?
Well, we can do it manually, so...
Orally?
Excuse me, yes.
It's all manual?
Yeah, well...
Non-lectronically.
Old school.
Old school. So do we have a motion then? Mr. Bagley?
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed changes to the handbooks, student handbook as proposed.
Proposed, seconded by Ms. Badger. Any other questions now to the motion? Okay, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Now, we did skip over that homeschooling item on the agenda. Is there a homeschooling matter tonight?
That was in the draft that we discussed last week.
Okay, I have so many agendas in front of me, I can't keep track of this meeting, you know? Okay, then moving along, fundraising.
Yes, this evening, you'll notice a number of highlighted updates to fundraising, and we hope to have the overwhelming majority completed by our last...
Any questions?
As well.
No hands?
Some of the returns are really good on some, on some of the new ones that have been updated. The returns have been nice.
Impressive.
Better than we've seen in a while on a few of them. I mean, like, one of the things that was our pet peeve not too long ago was the Yankee candles, that we felt that they weren't making, for as much effort they were putting into, we weren't keeping much of it, but that seemed, those numbers seem to have gone up. I don't know if we changed the, you know, they changed their corporate policy or whatever, but...
Increased percentage.
Yeah, something happened. That was all I had.
Thank you. Committee member reports, committee members? Ms. Hunt?
You know, other than it being a really busy week last week between the awards nights and graduation, I did want to mention something that I attended on behalf of Massachusetts PTA. I was invited last Wednesday to a press conference with Maura Healy for a new program called The Here Project, H-E-R-E. It was Maura Healy, it was the Chris Heron Foundation, GE Foundation, and Epicenter, and it was supposedly top secret until we got there, but what it was is that there's a grant that's being funded, and what's going to happen is all middle schools in the Commonwealth, I think it's, they said it was like 354 middle schools, are going to have a drug education awareness program in grades five through eight, and that's all schools. It's probably not going to be rolled out until early September, but it's going to be a three-step process. It is going to have some kind of a curriculum piece. Project Here will provide curriculum materials to every public middle school in Massachusetts that wants them, as well as support resources for students who are struggling with addiction, trainings for educators and parents on substance use prevention, and access to an innovated, an innovative mobile platform with prevention content, and the programming will begin in the fall of 2017. So it's something that I believe we have to opt in, I've already shared the information with Dr. Miasis and Dr. Campbell, and Carolyn Rains, the nurse manager, so it's, I think it's really exciting, I think it's a good step in the right direction. I actually had a chance to talk to Attorney General Healy afterwards and told her a little bit about us in Plymouth and that we are working on our health curriculum and that this is really timely for us, and I invited her to come tour our new school because they'd been here before and they were really excited about it, so I just, I think it's a good step in the direction. The only thing that concerns me a little bit is right now, it's the bones, they don't have the meat, so they're going to be working all summer on actually developing the content and creating this mobile app for students, but hopefully their plan is to roll it out in September.
That's good information.
So it was, it was a really good experience, and I'm glad that I was able to go.
Thank you. Ms...
Could I ask her a question? About the Shichigahama fundraiser, is that still at the 99 on Tuesday night?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, it's tomorrow night, from 5:00 to close. I don't remember what the percentage is, if...
15%.
It is a 15%, and I, there are coupons out there that you need to show, but I believe there are going to be students there.
They usually have a layer, because when we had one for the veterans, so did.
Well, the students are going to be there handing them out, and I think that they're taking turns.
They allow you to do that, yeah.
Yep, yep. I'm trying to figure out how to squeeze that into my day tomorrow, but I will hopefully be there at some point.
Ms. Badger?
I just wanted to thank everybody who participated in the Alumni Association raffle. We raised over $800 for next year's scholarship, so we're starting off on the right foot for next year and hope we can, you know, continue to give out a good-sized scholarship at each school. And then just a reminder about the PMS Kid Ride on June 25th, and they're having an orientation for anyone who's interested in being a volunteer on June 13 at 7:00 in the library, so that's it.
Other reports from committee members? I have two items. One is that our Saturday meeting, which is scheduled for the first Saturday in August, is the Saturday that I'm in Japan, so you can do it without me, or you can try to reschedule. So if we want to reschedule, that we can't, it's late, we can't do it here at the table, I would like you to send me, if you look at your Saturdays in July and your Saturdays in August, and send me the dates that you believe you'd be available for a meeting, and we'll try to get the meeting ended perhaps by 2:00, so you can plan something later in the day if you want. So send that to me soon, and if, we'll try it that way. If that doesn't work, we'll have to bring it back to the table here and knock it around for a while. Okay, everybody understand that? The next one is the MASC Conference in Hyannis, which is scheduled for November 1 through The preregistration is $375, and that preregistration date goes until July 15th. If we want to register somebody after July 15th, it'll cost us more money. So please let Nancy know if you're interested in going to this, so she can get us preregistered. Everybody understand that? Mr., oh, you're, Mr. Bailey?
I'm just going to say, sign me up this year, because I'm, I think I'm the representative this year, so I need to go.
And you might have some company.
And I usually can fit it into my schedule, so you can put me down for it as of right now.
I'll go.
All right, moving along, PYDC.
Yeah, there's a meeting this Friday.
Okay. Same thing with the building committee, we didn't have a meeting.
It's Thursday.
Next Thursday?
No, this coming.
This Thursday, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, well, okay.
Thursday, Thursday night and Friday morning. Be a busy time.
Personnel reports?
Yes.
We have one coach and advisor appointment, one classified appointment, three maternity leaves, and 10 resignations, so getting into the busy time.
Just a side issue, do we have a sick leave bank meeting Wednesday morning?
We do, yes, 7:30. Our last one.
Okay, the next item is the warrant.
The assignments.
I don't see it, I don't see it.
I don't see it on mine either.
It's on the left-hand side.
Oh, here's it. I handed out the committee assignments, is there a need to discuss them?
When did you hand them?
They weren't on the table this evening?
Did I get them?
In the attachment? And where?
Under member reports.
I just, that's why I didn't...
Under member reports. Everybody has.
Member reports, where?
I did have, I did have a question about, like, the school liaison piece, I just didn't, and the copy that I have, maybe it's my iPad?
School liaisons haven't been done yet.
Okay, just checking.
We have some time to do that.
Okay, just wanted to check. Perfect, thank you.
Find the tab, you put it right there.
Oh.
No, it can't be yours. Your business?
You bring it up under...
Under what?
Right here.
Which tab was it under? I mean, I have it printed, so I obviously found it.
10.1.
I'll be darned if I can find it now.
Attachment under committee reports.
Committee reports.
9.2.
Go down here, where it says...
9.2.
It's 9.2, and then committee reports attachment, committee assignments attachment.
There is a committee assignment. Is there a warrant?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Can we move along?
Welcome up, because the schedule of bills is up for action.
Ah, I have, I have an update.
Please do.
I can rescind my request to be on the, to go to the conference, because I just put a piece of paper down, and now I see a straight line rather than the curvy line I usually see.
I thought it was me.
And I'm off by one row, so...
I thought so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Free time.
I'm disappointed, but...
I sense that.
Yes.
Voting delegate.
Usually, it isn't an old experience, Chris.
Voting delegate.
I thought that they have a...
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, the next item on our agenda is the warrant.
Where the school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrants review, for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S zero six zero eight one seven dated June eighth, two thousand seventeen in the amount of one million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and seven cents as presented.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Any question? And we'll take that vote electronically.
Really? Oh, there it is.
And now that's unanimous. We have now finished our agenda, as far as I can tell.
Who knows?
Stand adjourned, thank you very much.